Yeah.
There's such beautiful trees, but I know they don't have a 20-year life.
They have more than a 20-year life, but they're not.
Last time you had to sit up here, huh?
Last time.
You're lucky.
They rip upside.
It's almost a long tree.
Yeah, I mean, it made a really striking.
Founder of the city, came here about six years ago. Nice to meet you.
Yeah, no, that's, that's the dilemma.
Sure.
The most striking.
Well, it's permanent.
Things cost better on trees, so it's kind of a.
Is the substitute tree, uh?
It's a year from this day that you've got the contribution.
I'd like to see them look at the substitute tree along with the park design, the one that's, the one that
No, no, on this one, yeah.
They talked about.
Is it as tall?
No, no, it, it, it won't get as tall. It's just, it's not a very fast grower. It's dense and, it will be dense and upright, but it won't get more than thirty-five feet, so. It's much more, so I think that they ought to look a little bit more and come up with a complete, more complete design.
Is there, you don't know anything off the top of your head?
Yeah, well.
It's a real, uh, particular.
Oh, you want to do.
I'm not, I'm not a horticulturalist.
I don't want eucalyptus, but that's the least of tall trees.
Right, no, I'm not a real horticulturist and.
I'm here yet.
Oh, you, you mean, usually here at this?
Well, I'm.
Oh, yeah.
But I looked at the list and some of the things.
We didn't arrange this too carefully, did we?
Not so much. I think there's others, I think there's a.
Words can't express my anxiety.
Things that.
Ran an expo and home.
Never giving you a hard time, huh?
But they're, they're on, these, most of these trees are public property, but Chiron put them in.
Yeah.
He's willing to replace them.
I told Michael that I was gonna move into the terraces.
Which is good.
But it's probably part of the dilemma, isn't it?
And you won't be able to work for the city anymore.
Oh, that they would have.
The furniture.
To encourage, uh.
I see.
To rebuild, but not anywhere that's within five hundred feet of anything.
Well, it wouldn't work for the city attorneys, but I was just like, hey, so many of these projects.
He was her cookies to pass around.
Oh, nice.
Thank you, Patty.
Don't leave starting out your quickies every evening.
Uh-huh.
Hey. You're gonna learn to shop.
She does it every time.
I don't get a minute to.
My god, he's felt really good.
Wow.
Switch, 'cause I.
I'll take a chocolate chip, thanks. Yeah.
Thank you.
It did come on. A little bit.
Free dinner.
Yeah, you know anything else?
Yeah. Thanks, Patty.
And you, you know, I missed two days of eating, so I've made it for today.
Oh, I was kidding.
I was just busy.
This is no indication of.
Sick.
It's just.
Stomach bug.
Patty being sweet.
No, I think, yeah. You were just in the mood, huh?
Actually. Oh, Susan's not coming?
She, I think she is.
Um, you know, I told her she needed to go to a doctor. Is that okay to mention?
Yes, none of us are going to jinx.
Hospital, like on vacation for her?
So, when I say something, it, you know?
I've been told one thing and it's been.
We have to take a second one?
Um, well, you don't have to.
It's a social obligation.
Oh, I wonder if Patty knows.
Our arms are being twisted. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, are we ready to go? Let's see, let's see the door close.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to bring to order the planning commission meeting for June twenty-second. Uh, Charlie, can we have the roll, please?
Uh, certainly. Commissioner Cardoza.
Here.
Commissioner Donaldson.
Here.
Commissioner Kane.
Here.
Commissioner Troyding.
Here.
Vice Chair Martin.
Here.
Chair Jeffrey.
Here.
And Commissioner Germaine has an excused absence this evening, so we have a quorum of six commissioners.
Thank you, Charlie. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any citizens to be heard this evening on items that are not on the agenda? If so, please come forward and identify yourself. Seeing none, we will move on to the action recap. Commissioners, have any comments?
I have, I have one, um, emphasis I would like to make on the, um, Colbert Dare triplex on page seven. Just before the motion under the commission indicates that the applicant should submit a complete landscape plan and site plan indicating the location of fences and trees. After the word fences, I'd like to delete the word "and." And then after the word trees, I'd like to insert the word "and other landscaping on the entire property." And then continue to the planning director for review and approval. I just want to make it clear for the record that we have some expectations there that hopefully will give staff some additional backup.
I would like to echo that. Very good, Jim, thank you.
Absolutely.
I think that did get into the conditions of approval, but it didn't get into the action recap, so, all right.
Thanks, Charlie.
Good, thanks.
With that, I'd make a motion for approval, Second Amendment.
With exception, without exception? Okay. Charlie, uh, oh, we're on to the election of officers. Uh, this evening represents my last meeting as the chair. This year has gone by very fast, and this evening we will be electing a new chair and a new vice chair. Do I hear a motion? Recommending anyone?
I'd just like a point of clarification. We, Paul is not here. Murray and Ed are both stepping down. Is this not something we typically do after we have new commissioners, so that they're part of that decision?
It's typically done in June of each year.
Regardless of the reappointment process.
Um, well, that's been the tradition. I don't know if there's any requirement for that. Uh, typically, if new commissioners are appointed in July, they would probably not have been considered as chair or vice chair anyway, since they're so new.
Right.
Um, and, well.
I, it just.
I don't know, I mean, I suppose you could say it's a courtesy to the outgoing commissioners to have a voice in the future officers, but all I can tell you is it's been the tradition.
Okay.
If not the requirement that it occur in June of each year.
Okay.
Other commissioners, okay with that? Okay.
We could always make Paul the chair, since he's not here to defend himself.
You, um, let me just clarify that.
There is a danger.
There's no requirement that you do it this month. And you could put it over to a future meeting if you wish to.
Yeah, I, I'm looking at the ordinance right now, and it says that the, um, your, the chair, vice chair, and secretary shall serve for one year until, or until their successor is selected. So, it, it can be done tonight or it can be done in March of May.
What's the pleasure of the commission?
Do it months from now.
I think it makes sense to wait.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, let's continue it till the July meeting.
Good, Patty.
Okay, uh, Charlie Director's report.
Okay, um, it was mentioned that, uh, both Commissioners Troyding and Kane are stepping down, and, um, I know we'll have a chance to, uh, roast them next month. But I do, this, tonight is their last meeting, um, and I just want to acknowledge, uh, both of them, Murray and Ed, your six years on the commission. You've, uh, certainly done a lot of good service to the city of Emeryville in the last six years, and on behalf of staff, I just want to say it's been a pleasure and an honor to, uh, work with you over the last six years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, city council actions. Uh, first, I'd like to just call your attention to a couple of upcoming council meetings. On July eighteenth, which is the next council meeting, as you know, they recess in, uh, they take a summer recess in the first part of July. So, the next regular council meeting will be July eighteenth, and at that meeting, there will be a study session on, uh, Topher Delaney's peer review of the Park Avenue District Plan. I believe that's scheduled to start at six-thirty. Uh, and there will also be a public hearing on the appeal of your denial of the signs for Boyd's Auto Repair on Powell Street. That was appealed, and the planning, and the city council has set the hearing date for July eighteenth. Um, and then on August first, the, uh, council will be having a study session on parking and all of its various aspects and permutations. Um, so that should be interesting. I don't know what time that will start, probably six or six-thirty. The city council has met, uh, twice since your last meeting, on June sixth and June twentieth. On June sixth, the redevelopment agency approved a contract with SCFM to come up with some design suggestions to improve the overall appearance of the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center. And the redevelopment agency also considered an offer to purchase property at ten forty-two Forty-Eighth Street, which is a small, um, building lot on the part of Forty-Eighth Street where it turns and goes into Fifty-third Street. It's right on the Emeryville border with Oakland, on the north-south portion of that street. Um, and that could be a possible site, future site for another community garden. The redevelopment agency authorized, um, an appraisal and soil testing in anticipation of, uh, acquisition of that property.
And what's currently on that property?
It's vacant.
It's vacant lot?
Um, the city council approved a general plan amendment to the, uh, floor area ratio for the Age Song Project, and they also approved on first reading an ordinance to add the group care, uh, use to the list of conditionally permitted uses in the Light Industrial Zoning District. That, of course, is also, um, part of the Age Song Project. You may recall that your approval of that project was contingent upon council approval of a general plan and zoning amendment. So, they did that, and then the second reading of the ordinance was, uh, occurred on June twentieth. So, both of those actions have now been taken by the council. They considered two noise waivers on June sixth. Uh, one, BRE's request for Saturday work at Avenue sixty-four, formerly known as the Pinnacle Project, was denied. And, uh, they did approve a request to modify their previous approval, uh, for an overnight concrete pour at fourteen oh-one Park to eliminate the requirement that backup beepers be disabled. They approved a cabaret permit for Kitty's Bar at Sixty-seventh and Hollis, so now you can all go dancing there without fear of being arrested. Um, and Councilmember Frickie made a presentation about railroad crossing quiet zones and the results of his survey on train horn noise. On June twentieth, the council had a presentation, heard a presentation, and had a lengthy discussion about the Ashby-Schelmound interchange, and particularly about the bicycle and pedestrian facilities proposed there. They postponed a decision on an affordable housing agreement for the Glass House Project, and they requested that that agreement be renegotiated with more of the townhouse units being included. However, they did authorize us to issue the building permit for that project before that agreement is finalized. Um, they did grant another noise waiver. This was to Wareham for the third overnight concrete pour at the Emery Station East Project. I believe that, uh, pour is scheduled to occur this weekend, uh, tomorrow and Saturday, right? Um, they discussed an ordinance to reduce the compact parking ratio from sixty percent to twenty percent, which, as you know, you previously discussed and did not make a recommendation on. Um, they decided to take no action on that until after the August first study session on parking. And, um, they indicated that they want to consider this in the larger context of overall parking requirements, dimensional standards, and so forth. And finally, certainly not least, they adopted the budget for fiscal years two thousand six, seven, and two thousand seven, eight. Um, the general plan update, the next meeting of the steering committee will be this coming Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, starting at six-thirty in this room. And it will feature, uh, a presentation by myself on the jobs housing balance issue and residential unemployment densities, and by Economic Development Director Pat O'Keefe on the economic and fiscal impacts of development, especially local-serving retail. And then in July, the consultants will be coming back with future development scenarios, which will be reviewed by the committee and then presented to the public at a community workshop, probably in September. And that concludes my report on everything other than the LMA projects, so I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have on anything I've reported on so far.
The, Charlie, the beeper exception for fourteen oh-one, is that because you can't disable?
Right.
Beepers back, you know?
Well, it's extremely problematic. They're, they're hardwired, they can't just be switched off, and, um, apparently, they were not, neither they nor Wareham was able to find any concrete companies who were willing to turn them off. Because the trucks have to go from the plant to the site.
Right.
And when they're at the plant, they have to have the beepers on, and if they get stuck in traffic on the freeway and they have to back up or something, the beepers have to be on.
Right.
So, they'd have to basically cut the wires at the construction site and then patch them back together again when they left, so, and the insurance companies wouldn't, uh.
Is that a standard condition, though?
Excuse me?
Isn't that standard language in our current noise condition?
It is standard language that the city council has imposed in other situations.
So, we're gonna change that?
Um, well, the council was willing to change it for fourteen oh-one Park and Wareham.
Okay.
They implemented some other noise attenuation measures.
Okay, thanks.
Basically, uh, they're uninsurable if they disconnect those.
That's what they told us.
So that, you know, there's just not gonna be any concrete.
There is, there is an OSHA-approved alternative to having, having a, uh, a spotter behind the truck, but the insurance companies won't go for that.
Oh.
Okay, thanks.
Well, 'cause I think that's what our standard condition has right now, that there's a spotter out there, that there won't be the backup noise, and there'll be a spotter.
Well, that's been for noise waivers that the city council has approved. I don't believe any of those have ever come to the commission.
Okay.
Um, all right, on the LMA projects. As you know, LMA has sold fourteen oh-one Park and the Doyle Street condominium project to Prometheus, and they will retain the Forty-sixth Street Loss Project, uh, also known as Flecto. And I'm pleased to announce that we have progress on all three projects. Fourteen oh-one Park Avenue, the foundation permit was issued to Prometheus on December twenty-third. A permit for shoring and bracing of the existing brick facade and demolition of the remainder of the old foundation was issued on January ninth. The demolition is now complete, and the work on the foundation was finished yesterday. The building permit for the superstructure was issued today, and construction is scheduled to start tomorrow. We estimate that the construction of this building will take approximately eighteen to twenty-four months. On the Doyle Street condominiums, the interior demolition is complete. The foundation permit was issued on May twelfth, and the podium permit was issued on May thirtieth. Construction is proceeding on both of those. The permit for the superstructure, uh, that is to say, the wood frame townhouses above the podium, is still under review, and it's somewhat complicated because of the, I don't know if you recall the design of the building, but it's got some pop-ups and different roof, roof forms and so forth, with, which structurally it makes it complicated. So, this will require further work and review before a permit can be issued for that. And on Forty-sixth Street Loss, which is, uh, the remaining LMA project, a permit was issued for the foundation and the concrete portion of the superstructure on June eighth. Construction is anticipated to begin on this by the end of June, that is, within the next, uh, couple of weeks, as soon as they have their financing lined up for it. Uh, the building division is still reviewing plans for the wood portion of the superstructure and for the non-structural aspects of the entire project. It's anticipated that, uh, a number of additional revisions to those plans will be needed. The building official will be meeting with them on this on June twenty-eighth. And that concludes my report on the LMA projects.
Thank you, Charlie. Any questions, Charlie? Okay, seeing none, uh, we'll begin our public hearing session of the evening's meeting. We have three public hearings tonight, and the first public hearing is the removal and replacement of street trees on Fifty-third Street.
Um, Chair Jeffrey?
Yes.
Um, this is the first of tonight's recusal for me.
Okay.
I received a campaign contribution by Chiron in excess of two hundred and fifty dollars, so I need to recuse myself.
Thank you, Ed. Uh, Hank, I believe this one's yours.
Chair Jeffrey, I'd also like to point out that it, this application also involves one tree on Stanford Avenue, in addition to the twenty-six on Fifty-third Street.
Thanks, Charlie.
Okay, um, this project, as you know, is for the, is a request for the removal of a total of twenty-seven trees, uh, on the Novartis, uh, campus. Uh, twenty-six trees of those, twenty-six of those trees are on Fifty-third Street, and one tree on Stanford Avenue, uh, which is within the right-of-way. Uh, this project is exempt from environmental review, and, um, I will proceed with, um, my part of the discussion on this. Uh, I met with, I met for the first, with first time on this project, uh, in late two thousand and five with, uh, representatives from, um, from Novartis, and, uh, discussed with them, uh, what they were requesting, and, uh, considered, uh, the, uh, the Arborist report that had been submitted. And we, uh, went into looking at different alternatives, uh, for this, uh, different alternatives for the, instead of the removal. Um, first, we, uh, discussed the, the Lombardi poplar, the existing Lombardi poplar on the north side of, uh, Fifty-third Street in terms of alternatives. Uh, one alternative suggested was to, uh, replace every other tree and install the hornbeam, uh, alternative, which they had identified as the tree that they wanted to plant. Um, this was rejected by the landscape architect for aesthetic reasons. Uh, another alternative was planting new trees, uh, in between the existing poplar and not removing, uh, the existing trees. Uh, this was re-dre, rejected, uh, as well, uh, as that the midpoint between the current trees provides locations for streetlights, fire hydrants, and signs. Removing sections of paving between the existing trees was considered, and, uh, it was felt that planting these new landscape zones and removing the slab under the pavers that would be removed would likely make the problem of lifted pavers worse. And since these trees had a, uh, an established root system with a pavement slab in, in place, the Arborist believes that the roots rely on the slab for structural support, and removal of the slab could compromise the stability of the trees. After consideration of the above alternatives, staff believes that the long-term view of removing the existing poplars on the north side of Fifty-third Street and replacing the poplars with the columnar hornbeam trees, revising the installation provisions as needed to prevent roof intrusion problems experienced with the poplars is the appropriate course of action. The removal, replacement of the poplars should occur with the construction of the Hollis Green Park. For the poplars on the south side of, uh, Hollis, there, there were few alternatives, uh, to complete removal of the poplars and replacement with the hornbeam tree, uh, proposed for the north side of Fifty-third Street. Uh, Steve Batchelder, the Arborist retained by, uh, Novartis, uh, who happens to be the ar, the Arborist that the city has re, uh, retained on its, uh, tree issues, um, indicated that the poplar trees on the south side of the park, uh, would not survive the park construction and sidewalk repairs that need to take place. Um, Novartis had originally proposed to replace the poplars with bald and burlapped hornbeams, which are larger than box trees. And, um, for a number of reasons, uh, we felt that this was the, the better alternative, uh, because the trees could be, uh, print, uh, planted, um, in such a way as that, uh, they, they would grow in, in conformance with the safety requirements that were being placed on it. However, uh, there is a short-term consequence in that, uh, uh, the hornbeam trees, uh, provided in this manner would not be available till, till winter. Um, and it was considered, uh, possible that, uh, well, uh, stepping back a minute, the, the park construction is planned for, uh, starting in July, and, um, uh, it was felt that there, there was a short-term negative impact in that there would be no street trees with the removal of the existing poplars, uh, if that were done at that point in time. And briefly, it was considered that, um, temporary trees could be installed, but, uh, that really, um, uh, does not seem to be in the best interest of, uh, the long term, which is that the, the bald and burlap, uh, trees to be planted will, in the long term, be healthier and, uh, more stable, and with the proper treatment of the roots, uh, less of a problem. Um, so, um, in, in conclusion to that, it is, it is our recommendation for the trees on, uh, Fifty-third Street that, uh, their, their request be granted. Um, I will go in, uh, into the application of the urban forestry ordinance in, in a bit, but, uh, would first like to cover the, um, the tree on Stanford. Uh, the tree on Stanford, um, is the only tree, uh, in that grove of trees that, uh, was in the right-of-way. The removal of any other trees, uh, uh, would be on Chiron's property outside the right-of-way, and, uh, are, are without, are, are outside of the, the city's ability to maintain or to, uh, impose conditions on. And it is, um, their, their request that they plan on removing the first row of trees because of potential increased liability to the roots uprooting the sidewalk, as is the case for the one in the right-of-way. The other rows of, the other two rows of, uh, Novartis trees are intended to, uh, remain. In terms of the, um, urban forestry, uh, ordinance, uh, I will, uh, recite the purpose of the ordinance, and, uh, that is, uh, it states that one of the public purposes of the ordinance is, uh, see to promote efficient, cost-effective management of the city's urban forest by coordinating public and private efforts within a comprehensive and professional management. and private efforts within a comprehensive and professional management system, and further in portion E, to reduce the public hazard nuisance and expense occasioned by improper tree selection, planting, and maintenance." And this seems to fit exactly what is being done in the case with the Lombardi poplar trees on 53rd Street and Stanford Avenue. One of the more repeated versions of the urban forest ordinance is that the removal of street trees states as follows. If the department grants a permit for tree removal, the department normally shall require the planting of a replacement tree of equal or cumulative diameter to the tree approved for removal. When replacement of a tree of equal diameter is not feasible for reasons related to site-specific conditions, replacement of the largest practical diameter, as determined by the director of Public Works, shall be required. When the replacement tree cannot match the diameter of the tree to be removed due to site-specific conditions, the department shall require replacement planting of several trees of equal cumulative diameter to the tree being removed, or payment of replacement value fee of, or any combination thereof, which would equal the value of the tree to be removed or determined by a certified Arborist. In cases where the need for street tree removal is without fault of the property owner, and the property owner is not otherwise responsible for maintenance of the street tree or for other good cause shown, the department may waive the requirement to plant a replacement tree of equal or cumulative value or payment of a replacement value fee. And this is exactly the condition that applies in these trees. The applicant, Novartis, when the, the trees were planted about 10 years or so ago, made every effort to, to deal with what was known as the invasive, invasive root characteristic of the tree. And despite those efforts, they were not successful in doing so. So it is, it is my recommendation that the installation of the new hornbeam trees will be as described, and that the applicant is not required to replace or to pay into a fund to, for the replacement of trees that may be larger in the cumulative diameter. And in regarding the Stanford Avenue situation, we, we have a condition where the existing tree has resulted in significant displacement of the sidewalk, creating a liability for which there has already been one claim submitted. And we feel that that, that tree can be replaced and, and can be removed and does not require to be replaced. If there are any other questions, I would be glad to try and answer them. Otherwise, the applicant may want to present additional information.
No questions?
I actually have a question. I think that's a thorough report, Hank. I do have a question about the tree size. Under condition five, it specified a 36-inch box unless the Arborist contains, obtains approval for smaller tree. Do you see, I mean, 36-inch is not a huge tree, but it's better than a 15-gallon. So is your impression that we're going to get a decent-sized recusal?
Yeah. What, what Steve Batchelder said is that the bald and, and the bagged and bald-
Bald and burlapped.
Bald and burlapped.
Bald and burlapped is adequate, is, is comparable to 36-inch tree and is better for the site conditions here to plant and, in, in a situation where the construction under the surface will prevent the, the problems they've experienced.
What would be the size of the box tree? I mean, if, if the bald and burlapped is 36 inches, what's the size of the box tree?
Well, they, they are saying that the bald and burlapped tree is about approximately 16 feet in height. 36-inch box, I do not think would, would be that size. So what they're, they're, the, the other reason for the process that they have, they are describing or requesting is to restore as soon as possible a tree that, that, that has already achieved some height rather than something that's relatively small. And we'll take time to get to that point.
Thanks, Hank. Any other questions of Hank?
I had one other, and that-
Sorry, I'm going to interrupt you.
It's okay. The hornbeams, I mean, it's, we're not going to have problems with the root system of a hornbeam.
Well-
Right?
That's what I understand from the Arborist. And I did have a call, or did talk with, actually, a Novartis employee this, this afternoon, and she feels that the root is susceptible to an oak rot or something I know nothing of. I, let's see, where's?
You know?
Oh, there he is. I think that's a question for the Arborist.
Okay.
And I, I would also say that as part of the encroachment permit provisions, Steve Batchelder would be inspecting for the city to see that the installation is correct. So Novartis would be paying whatever fees it is, whatever fees are required to see that the installation is satisfactual, satisfactorily implemented.
Can I ask that question to Steve before we open the public hearing? Yep.
Yes, good evening. I'm Steve Batchelder. I've been introduced already. But anyway, as far as the question on the oak root fungus, Armalaria millia, it's a common fungal organism that kills a lot of trees here. It will kill, I've seen it kill poplars, I've seen it, maples are supposed to be resistant, I've seen it kill maples. The advantage of this site is that these trees are planted in structural soil where there is no oak root fungus there. Once it gets in the soil, the only answer is really to take all the organic material you can of the infected stuff out of there and find resistant trees. And a healthy tree has more resistance than obviously a weak one. But as I understand it right now, there would be no oak root fungus in the soil, so it wouldn't be something we worry about.
Okay. And you feel that it's, this is a good tree?
Uh, hornbeam's a good tree. It's a much more behaved tree. Obviously, the poplar tree grew very, very fast. In 10 years, it's 50, 60 feet tall. And, but that's the problem. This is, this is the tree we normally call a 30-year tree, because they usually cycle out by then. They can live 50 or 60 years or more sometimes, but the average life in a street tree situation is pretty short. And a lot of that is due to people cutting roots and doing things to try to maintain the tree and the location, and then the damage compounds and the tree goes out. So that's, that's sort of what the scenario that will, if these trees were left, that's sort of what the scenario you'd find in the future, just problems getting greater and greater as the tree gets larger.
I had a question about the list of species that were possible for the replacement planting. How did you go through and eliminate the other ones and end up with the hornbeam? Because there's other ones on the list that will ultimately get taller than the hornbeam will.
Okay, yeah, well, generally, I didn't make the final decision. I presented, I provided a list of possible species. So that was not my final decision. It was based on availability and a design criteria. And the hornbeam is a very nice-looking tree. The, the leaf is really, you know, a nice little variegated leaf that, that looks really nice. So anyway, that was, that was made by, I assume, Peter Walker, and the tree is widely planted around, and it will thrive in this location, especially in the structural soil.
Is the hornbeam, does it have a similar form to a poplar, or is it more open and leafy?
This is, this is, this is the fastigat hornbeam. There's, there's different types of hornbeam. This is the fastigat one where all the branches are up swept. So it is very similar to the Lombardi poplar in that manner, yes. It's not as tall, obviously, but it has the same form.
And it's evergreen as well?
Uh, no, it's a deciduous tree.
Oh, is it? Okay. And it's, it's ultimate height?
Ultimate height is about 40 feet.
Okay.
You mean hornbeam? And can you, what's its, I understand it's a moderate growth rate, is that?
Uh, well, like I say, we talk about moderate growth rate. Look at what the poplars did. The reason was because the structural soil that's available there has lots of oxygen in it, and that's the main limitation. So these trees grew very fast, and I would expect the, the hornbeams to grow very fast as well. This is a picture of some of the similar trees from a nursery that are difficult to see.
Is this the hornbeam?
Is this-
Those are hornbeams there, yes.
And is that the size that we would get as a bald and burlapped tree?
Yes, yeah, those are about 16 feet tall, I would guess. And they're, I called up nurseries in Oregon where they'd come from, and I found a range of 16 to 20 feet is what the nurseries told me their, their three-and-a-half-inch caliper hornbeams were.
And if they're planted as street trees, are they going to be, the ones on this picture, the limbs are starting at about three-foot height, are they going to be limbed up to six feet?
I would assume they'll, I assume they'll be limbed up, yes. They'll probably be limbed up, there's a procedure in doing it properly because you don't want to take too many branches off too quick, but you also don't want to leave branches on too long when you're making large wounds. So there's, there'll be a procedure laid out on the early structural pruning to, and like I say, based on the city requirements of first permanent branch and things like that.
So there would be some transition time where, I mean, they're not going to be put in and then-
No, you wouldn't, you would not go in and take all the lower branches off right away. That would be detrimental to the tree. So you would wait a little bit of time. So there's plenty of room on the sidewalk for the width of these trees, even with the branches all the way down. But like I say, the final design would probably be made as far as were the branching, and that would be, you know, Novartis and Peter Walker probably making that decision.
Any other questions of Steve?
Are there no plans to do anything to the Sycamore at the northwest corner plaza?
Sycamore, right in the corner there? Yeah, those are, those are fine there, and there's, there's no, I haven't heard anything to do. They're not causing any, any problems at all. Well, mainly, the, the problems with a lot of the, the roots with the poplars are, they're invasive, but also there was an area where water was coming, getting into there from a different direction, and roots drew, drew to that, to the surface, so. So that, that area doesn't have any, any problems because there is no water coming in that's extraneous.
Thanks.
Hank, you had another comment?
This is, this is a question for Steve as well. And I don't know, Steve, whether you're staying with the same spacing of the trees. If you're staying with the same spacing and location, is there going to be extensive removal of the existing root structure and of the existing trees that, as to that issue? And secondly, I think that in the existing situation, there, there was some concern over reduced lighting from the streetlights in the area where they had some security provisions, and I'm wondering if that is going to be a concern as well.
The lighting shouldn't be, shouldn't be a concern at all because the hornbeam is a much smaller tree than the poplar. As far as, as far as the root system, it's probably better to take the poplars out this time. Where the poplars, poplars to remain another 10 years, it would be very difficult to get the root system out because especially on the north side, there is a sub-slab, and the roots are down through there, and if they get much larger, it'll be difficult to replant. So at this point, and the way the root, the existing roots will be gotten out there is somebody going in basically with a axe and physically chopping them out, because there's no way to get a machine in to do very much other than initial minor stump grinding. So it's, it's, like I say, there will be, there is a problem with the roots, and we don't suspect there will be any, poplars are notorious for respouting. And if we decided we wanted to get rid of, we wanted, I don't think they're going to respout because they can't get daylight of all of the root materials taken out of there. If necessary, if we were concerned about it for whatever reason, we would treat the, any exposed roots that were left with a fine film of, of Roundup to really knock them out, and that would be the procedure on that. But I don't suspect there'll be a problem. If you can get most of the root mass out of there, you've got the stored carbohydrates out, it's not connected anymore, and there's not enough energy to force growth again. But the poplar does try.
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation? Or does the commission have any comments, questions of the applicant?
Well, I'm just wondering, when, when the south side trees are removed, is the whole sidewalk coming up? Because I understand there's not a slab under that.
Joseph Mudd of Novartis. My understanding is there will be a slab under the south side after this construction is complete. That's the typical way we've done the other sidewalks there. There's a, there's a slab underneath, but it's not on the south side because we knew we had to take it back up again to build the park.
Joseph, would you plan on phasing that so that we don't have a situation where both sidewalks are out of commission, so that we can, you know, you can remove one and plant?
I think we can accommodate that without any trouble.
Okay, thank you.
I don't, I'm not sure we need to make a presentation. I thought the staff report was really complete, and so unless you have some questions, we can.
What's the choice of the carpinas? Was that Peter Walker's office, and was that done in conjunction with the design of the park?
Yes, it was. And I, I think I would agree that it was mostly to pick a tree that has the same basic form as the, as the poplar, so you have a vertical tree.
Okay, thank you, Joseph. Well, with that, I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? If so, please step forward and identify yourself.
And would the speakers please sign our sign-in sheet, which is over on your desk to the right after you've spoken? Thank you.
My name is Joan Bossard, and I'm a resident of Emeryville, and I also happen to be an employee of Novartis. And I have watched with great pleasure how the poplars have grown. I am very much aware of the problems that they can afford because once I had to get rid of a poplar, an old poplar, and it took a very long time. The cultivar that you're proposing to use of the, of the hornbeam is, I think the, you said it was the Fastegiata? Now, I think at, when it, when it becomes fully grown, it gets up to 30 or 40 feet wide, maybe 60 feet tall, but also very, very wide. It's not, it, it's my impression that it is not columnar. There is an, a columnaris, my pronunciation is not very good, that is a very narrow dense growth habitat that is similar to and often confused with Fastegiata. And I'm wondering if, if Novartis would consider using that cultivar instead of the Fastegiata, which would, sounds as if it's going to get much bigger. And my other question was going to be, and I don't think I heard it answered, are you going to replace each poplar with a hornbeam, or will you be spreading them over a wider range? And I think that's all I really have to say. What I really hope is actually when you get around to pruning the hornbeams, that you don't do what somebody madly did to the poplars a couple, a year or so ago, which was to just shave them, and, and they have looked awful ever since. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Hank?
There will be a hornbeam replaced for each of the Lombardi poplars. I should also mention that though it is a city street tree, as we have done with other large developments, it will be Novartis's responsibility to maintain the trees, and the city doesn't get involved in that other than if there's a problem that comes about with the, with the pruning.
Thanks.
And what about the varietal question?
Well, that's not a question for me. Steve, if you want that answered, I would expect that-
I guess we'll close the public hearing and then-
Yeah. Are there any other citizens wishing to speak on this item? Um, are there any other citizens wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And Steve, could you come up to the microphone again and provide some clarity on the, uh, the columnar effect of the two trees?
Uh, yes. Well, the situation is this, is that we talk about tree heights and we talk about tree spread and it varies widely from what's in the books. And it really depends a lot about the condition. And the, the Fastigata is a very upright. I don't think it gets as wide as that. The, what my understanding of this is about a twenty to twenty-five foot wide maximum tree, uh, in that range. But they, obviously, they could get wider than that, but I haven't seen them. There is a standard hornbeam, which has a whole different form, which gets quite wide. So, uh, I don't think it's, you know, in my, just off the top of my head, like I say, I could, we can go through, there's websites we can look at, and we can look at infor, information on them. But really, what we need to do is look at the conditions. Like say, if you had a, if you had a red maple here, uh, it would grow to about thirty-five feet. If you had a red maple in the east coast, you'd have a seventy-foot tree and much. So anyways, there's a big variation in how trees perform in different areas. And so all I can tell you is that I think the, the tree is going to be appropriate, that it's not too big and it won't spread, you know, to thirty-five feet or anything like that.
Were both varieties considered by Walker?
Uh, I, basically, the Fastigata is, is the, the one that's, that's most readily available at the nursery. So that was probably the reason that one was chosen. And you can see the picture of it there and you can see that it does really stay quite narrow.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, let's bring this back to the commission. Commissioners?
I move approval.
I guess, um, I'll second that, but I'd also like to make some comments. I, this is the most, that street tree and the, the LA and the treatment there and the frontage, I think is the, the nicest frontage treatment we have in the city. So it's unfortunate that we have this problem and I'm sure you're aware of that as well. And, um, I hope the hornbeam doesn't become a problem because the pavers are part of that frontage treatment that make, you know, the pedestrian experience as pleasant as it is in front of your building. And I think that overall the improvements that you're planning, both with these changes, with the park installation and your future phasing, um, will address any concerns about the loss of the existing trees there. And I have to agree with staff that it makes sense to wait until we've got the appropriate growing conditions to get these trees in the ground. Um, summer is not the time to be putting a large street tree, um, in the sidewalk. So that six-month issue is not a concern to me. I just, I wanted to make that, um, clear. It's unfortunate we're losing these trees because they really are beautiful and dramatic, but I understand the issue.
Kayle, anything you want to add?
No, I would just agree with that. I think that the LAs of poplars around the Novartis building campus are the most striking streetscape that we have. And it's really, really sad that it was the wrong tree. And it really was the wrong tree because they tear things up. They're notorious for tearing things up. And from what I've read in the literature, the hornbeam is a very well-behaved tree, as, as was said. So, um, it's unfortunate, but I think it's unavoidable.
Um, I just have one change that I'd like to make in the conditions of project approval, and that's item number five. And maybe this is really picky here, but I'm not a landscape architect or a biologist. I'm a planner. So, you know, we don't know about all the technical details. But it says, "Tree size of new street trees shall be at least equivalent to thirty-six inch box trees." Shouldn't we change that box to burlap bag? Because there would be a difference. Bald and burlap? Okay.
Well, um, the reason we phrased it that way was that the proposed bald and burlap trees, we are told, will be at least as big as a thirty-six inch box tree. In the eventuality that for whatever reason, there may be cause to change this species, there is a condition that allows the Public Works Director to make that decision upon the advice of the arborist, um, which is number three. And if that should occur, we want to make sure that the trees are at least the size of a thirty-six inch box. So that's why that condition was phrased that way.
Well, I'd still prefer that it's a thirty-six inch bald and bag, a B and B.
I don't think the bald and burlap trees are measured that way.
Oh. I mean, I, I guess I'm just concerned, I want it to be specific, that, that this is what we've been told we're going to get. And, and if it, we're not going to get it, then it can be up to the discretion of the Public Works Director. But I think it's important we have it spelled out in the conditions.
Say at least sixteen feet tall?
Was there a caliper size specified?
Yes, there is. Three and a half, three, three and a half inch caliper. And that's how we normally, uh, classify B and B trees. And we talk about the height also, but you can talk about a three and a half inch caliper and sixteen foot high, uh, if you want to put that in there, that's probably what, that's what they'll be.
Okay, I, I would like to see that in the conditions.
That makes sense to me.
Okay, so in condition number five, we would substitute at least equivalent to thirty-six inch box trees and say at least three and a half inch caliper and sixteen feet high.
Thank you.
Right? Okay.
C and B.
Well, I'm sure we need to say, we want them to be bald and burlapped?
Isn't that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Well, for the hornbeams.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I think it will say, so the size of the European hornbeam trees shall be at least three and a half, um, inch caliber and sixteen feet in height, bald and burlapped.
There we go.
And then it should say, but if a different species of tree is chosen pursuant to condition number three, the new street trees, and then it will read.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Would be what, the same?
Yeah, then just continue on as you had before.
Okay, I, all right.
It went from two words to like about twenty words, but hey, you know, at least it's clear.
I thought that saying, "Tree size of new, I thought that saying, 'Tree size of new street trees shall be, be at least three and a half inch caliber and sixteen feet high' and bald and burlapped, if you want to say that, would cover it.
Okay, good.
That'll be any kind, right?
Um, and then I have one other comment, and this is on, uh, page, uh, three of the resolution. And it's under, um, section seven dash ten dot zero five, planting and removal of street trees. Um, the second paragraph or the response to this, um, there, the last sentence says, "It should also be noted that while trees outside the public right-of-way are not considered in the equal or cumulative diameter calculations, Novartis will be planting numerous trees in the new park that will far exceed the number and cumulative size of the trees being removed." And I don't see the connection there. It's sort of implying there's a mitigation. And, you know, this isn't, this isn't providing some sort of replacement. The park is on its own and that was a condition of project approval. So I just have some concerns. There's an implication that somehow this is some type of a mitigation or something that is being generously being done. And I, you know, it, to me, I, I interpret it that, that it's, it's not, it's just replacement for the trees that are being removed. It's not have, it doesn't have anything to do with the park, in my opinion. So I just have a problem with that language.
All right. I mean, the thinking was that, uh, uh, we are not requesting a replacement fee because of the situation where it's, the existing trees are creating a hazard and they're being replaced with new trees that may not be the same size or cumulative diameter. And, and that's justified for them not to have to pay the fee because of the damage the existing trees are doing to the sidewalk. I guess we just wanted to point out that overall there would be a lot more trees in this general vicinity than there are now, so.
No, I understand that, but I, I guess it just sort of implies that this is some kind of a mitigation and I don't.
That's not the intent.
Think it's.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a good cause standard, so it was, it was just trying to give you the background.
Okay, well, I just want to go on record and voicing my opinion on that.
Is that in the staff report or it's in, it's in the?
It's in the resolution.
The resolution.
Do you want that stricken?
Want that stricken from the resolution?
Yeah.
It's fine with me. I think there's substantial basis for making the decision anyway.
I agree. I mean, I don't, unless, Carol, you feel that somehow it jeopardizes?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I think, I think the fact that there, I mean, that there's a proven liability on the sidewalk and that these street trees only have a limited life.
Okay, good.
Good cause for.
Because we know there have been concerns in the community. So I just want to make sure we don't jeopardize the decision. Okay, thanks.
So then I would move approval with those changes?
I believe Commissioner Cardoza already moved that. And Commissioner Martin seconded.
Oh, with the amendment?
Well, except it didn't have those changes.
Yeah, with, I'll, I'll second with the amendment if the motion maker is agreeable. Okay.
All right. So the changes are that the condition five would reference the caliper size and height and bald and burlapped. And then we will delete the last sentence of the finding on the bottom of page three of the resolution. Correct?
That's it.
All right. You ready?
We're ready.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kane?
Aye.
Vice Chair Martin?
Aye.
Chair Jeffrey?
Aye.
Five ayes. The application is approved. I would note that under the urban tree ordinance, this decision is final and may not be appealed to the city council.
Yeah, okay. Well, moving on to our second public hearing this evening, uh, which is Howdy Pup Dog Care located at fourteen eighty-two sixty-seventh Street. Susan?
Our planning technician, uh, did the work on this and she had a little accident this weekend, but she's a stoic and she's going to hobble up here to the podium and make the staff presentation.
Hello. Try not to pull it off this time. Okay.
Got the portable there? If that helps, to down to the left.
Um, actually, I might need my hands to hold myself up, so. Okay, this is a conditional use permit to establish, um, a dog daycare facility located in the general industrial zone and the North Hollis overlay zone, um, on fourteen eighty-two sixty-seventh Street. Um, it's an existing building and it's a warehouse, um, in the, in the industrial zone. This is the site plan. You all have that in your packet? Sixty-seventh Street here, Hollis Street here. And, uh, this is, uh, the railroad tracks and the former base streets. This is the site location. It's, um, the second half of an industrial duplex. And there will be, uh, twelve parking spaces provided for the daycare facility. There's, um, already a handicap stripe zone there as well. This is the current front elevation of the proposed site here. And this is the other side of the duplex. And as you can see, there's a sidewalk that leads to the parking lot area to the front of the building. And there's a minimal amount of landscaping already existing in the front elevation of the building. This is the entrance to the parking lot. And the, it's listed on here as the common trash area, but the applicant, uh, reports that the landlord will be moving all of the stuff out of this parking lot to make room for the parking area. Uh, one of the conditions that we have listed is, um, some landscaping to screen the parking lot from the street. And the applicant is aware of that. I'll talk a little bit about the proposal. Well, this is the current configuration of the building right now. Um, the applicant is proposing to have a maximum fifty dogs, um, but she will integrate them, five dogs at a time, in order to facilitate both the training that they are planning to implement there, as well as establish dog socialization. The training that they are planning to implement is primarily for the indoor nature of the dog daycare, um, so that they, the dogs can be trained to go to the bathroom inside. And I'm sure you all enjoyed the staff report and all the, uh, lots of interesting things. I felt that probably nobody had ever typed the sentence, "The proposal includes an innovative approach to indoor animal toilet use." So I thought that was kind of cute. And there is a comprehensive amount of information and a lot of, uh, research that the applicant has done in order to make this a reality, um, instead of, you know, just a funny sentence. Um, let's see. So the proposed, I mean, this is the current configuration. And there's already existing, um, spaces in the building that she will then convert to various offices, um, supply, grooming area, um, reception area and, you know, employee rest area. She is not proposing any, um, internal changes other than setting up, um, bolted to the ground fences, um, chain link fences that will be tarp so that the dogs can't see each other and be jealous of where the other dogs are, or try to jump over. And they'll be six feet high, so the dogs can't jump over in, to the other areas. And she has, um, she has it organized, um, according to the dog's needs. There's, uh, nap areas and dog play areas, a special needs dog area, as well as a puppy play pen. And these are, all of these things will be bounded by four feet wide corridors for easy movement of the staff. And, um, they will also have, um, chain sort of entrance ways that it has sort of a double entrance so that the staff doesn't open the door and all the dogs come rushing out and, you know, has, goes haywire. There's like a security cage door that they will go in and close that and then go into the next cage with the dogs. There, um, is no proposed outside use or outside activities with the dogs. Uh, everything will be interior, which, um, with the, you know, focus on training of the dogs and, um, the separation of them and, you know, the care that's given to that, the staff feels that that's adequate. Also, um, the applicant is proposing to, she's doing, she's proposing to get, uh, industrial ionizers to mitigate any possible smells that could occur. Um, but the pet pot, pet potties that, um, she is installing also have, um, moisture absorbing and odor absorbing capabilities much like a cat litter box that, um, the solids can be scooped and disposed of and the, uh, liquids can retain and be odor absorbed and not have a stinky mess going on there.
Is your hand remote on?
I think so. Is it? Testing.
Yeah, it's on.
Maybe you need to speak a little louder.
Okay, sorry. Let's see. There aren't any, um, sort of, there aren't any guidelines for kennels that are specified in the zoning ordinance. Um, but, sorry, sorry, I lost my place here. Um, and I called around to a lot of places and tried to find any state guidelines that we could, you know, use as a model. And surprisingly, it's an unregulated kind of industry. So, um, uh, the applicant did research on her own and we found that the SBCA is recommending, they have a dog to square foot ratio of one to one hundred, one dog to one hundred square feet. And as, as it's written here, the rec, that recommendation is intended for larger dogs and the proposal includes both larger and smaller dogs. So, um, they're providing about a hundred and ten square feet per dog at the maximum capacity. So we think that is adequate. Um, the noise issue is, um, hopefully not going to be one because it is an active industrial, um, zone with many activities occurring during the hours that she's proposing. And the odor, again, um, the toilet training system, uh, we're hoping also with the ionizers will mitigate any negative odors. In terms of, uh, the parking and drop-off situation, as mentioned before, there's the, um, twelve spaces that are adjacent to the building to be used by the, um, dog parents. Also, the applicant is proposing a valet service whereby folks can call five minutes or so beforehand and a dog handler will bring the dog to the parking lot. We're recommending that, um, the applicant, uh, inquire to the transportation committee about getting a green stripe, much like the other dog daycare that's located in the city, so that it would make it easier. make it easier for folks to pull right up to the front. Because right now, people do park right in front of the building, and most of the industrial uses begin earlier than the dog daycare would begin, so that parking couldn't be relied upon. She's also going to limit the drop-off times of the dogs, so that people aren't just coming and going all the time. No drop-offs will be allowed after 10:00 a.m., they'll begin at 7:00. And that's not just for traffic congestion, but also there's a need to have the dogs be able to socialize themselves before they get split up again, and she's done extensive research on that as well, we could go into it some more, that it's important for the dogs to establish a pack mentality, and apparently, they don't have very long-term memories across the board, so they may forget who's the alpha dog, and they need time to remember. As it states, there are no prescribed parking requirements for kennels. In the North Hollis plan, the uses are required to provide adequate onsite parking, and staff feels that the 12 spaces will be adequate. I think that's all I have, if you have any questions?
Yes, the plan shows nothing about a trash area. Obviously, there's gonna be a good deal of waste material. Now, is it intended to flush that down the toilet, or what?
Yes, in the pet potties, it'll be something that will be monitored by the staff, the employees, throughout the day, and they will scoop sort of on-demand and seal it, you know, put it in a sealed container, carry it to the bathroom, and flush the solids.
But then the material that they've scooped it out of has to be replaced periodically?
It needs to-
And there's no, nothing shown on the plan for where that might go?
Well, there is an existing trash area that's in the back of the parking lot, and our environmental analyst, Peter Schultz Allen, has met with the applicant and found that her use wasn't, didn't engender a larger built structure for disposal. She had looked into various, you know, possibly recycling or composting, and it's just not available as of yet. But the pet potties, the actual material, has to be changed out about once a week, and it's kind of a, it's in a, it's a liner, and you just sort of take the whole thing out. And Peter Schultz Allen also felt that the trash, you know, a normal trash container would be adequate.
Do they pay a surcharge on the sewer, as a restaurant does, or not?
I don't think so, that's a good question, though. It's a lot of flushings.
And with this relocation of the trash facility, has there been a specified location for that? My concern is that it gets brought up to the sidewalk, and then the pads are gonna be sitting there until the next trash pickup. So I'd like to make sure the dumpsters don't get relocated up to the 67th Street frontage in the redesign, to make sure there isn't an odor problem during the course of the week. Do you have any indication how the property owner intends to reorganize that trash system?
From my understanding, the main thing that, I don't know if you can see it, but on the one that's marked designated parking lot for 1482, what I was referring to with the landlord removal is actually the steel sort of items that are, you know, flushed to the building, because that's where the parking, that's where her parking actually is designated. The trash, the trash dumpsters are located in the back of the parking lot, which I don't believe is part of the parking lot, that's where they exist already.
And they don't intend to relocate those?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, it's- Sorry.
No, that's fine. The two other questions I had, did you have anything specific for the landscape improvements along the fence? There's nothing shown, and the condition is pretty vague.
Right, no, we had looked, and she went and measured, you know, because it looks from the same picture that we were referring to before, it looks as if there's a bit of green right underneath, but she came and took a picture, and it's really just growing out from like cracks in the sidewalk. So there's not too much space for planters, but that is what, something that we discussed. And it is one of the conditions that, prior to the occupancy permit, that she submit a landscape plan and it be approved by the planning director. So we're still in conversation about that, but she is aware.
But if there are specific things that you would like to see there, please let us know, and we'll look for those.
But that would include irrigation?
Yeah, yes.
And the last question I had is signage. There's no reference to any signage. I know the signage on the other doggy daycare takes up a large part of the wall, and there's a big blank wall space here.
Yes, and we, I like the signage on the other dog daycare, it's nice with the greenery. The applicant does have some ideas, but she hadn't firmed them up yet, and so it wasn't going to be a part of the use permit. If the sign was going to be larger than what we could approve administratively, you would see her again.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Does the applicant wish to come forward and make a presentation?
Hi, my name is Crystal. I'm the owner of the proposed doggy daycare, and first of all, thank you so much for hearing, hearing about my business tonight. Basically, I just want to give you guys the opportunity to address any other concerns that you might have to me directly, and then talk a little bit more just about, you know, the way that I'm gonna run the business, which I am a, I'm gonna say retired software professional, I've been a manager, project manager, in the software industry for about seven years now, and I've decided that, having come from taking my own dog to daycare and having an extensive hobby in dog obedience training, which led me to start studying dog obedience training, and I'm in the process of getting myself certified as a certified obedience trainer. I kind of took that and my education, my management experience, and decided that this is something that I wanted to do. And I'm fascinated by dogs, I'm fascinated by business, and I think that I know how much I needed this type of business when I was in software and working those horribly long days, and living in an apartment or a townhome, and not having either space or time to really be as responsible of a dog parent as I thought I should be. So it allowed me a lot of flexibility in my own schedule, and a lot of flexibility just in my own conscience, to know that my dog was somewhere where it would be safe and socialized and loved and taken care of while I was working pretty long hours. So I have done a lot of research into what it's gonna take to keep this business operating effectively, also clean, sanitary, the dogs well-trained, well-socialized, and well-combined, so that we make sure that their temperaments work well with each other. All of this will reduce the amount of noise inherently, and will provide this, you know, what Susan referred to as a pack mentality, where these dogs are socialized with each other in a way that I'm able to handle them more effectively, and they're able to have a more enjoyable experience as well. So I guess if you guys have any specific questions for me?
I guess I have one question, as someone who admittedly has never owned dogs. I was a little bit surprised by the fact that there is no outdoor facility, and that these dogs are gonna be there potentially as long as 12 hours a day, and then they'll come home, and they'll presumably be in much of the night at home. I was surprised that there are not only no outdoor, but apparently no accommodations for walking and anything like that. Is that, and again, I don't know much about this stuff, is that standard in the industry? Is that, for example, the way the other place works, and is it standard in the industry to do that?
It is standard in some areas, especially in more urban areas, where it's very difficult to find an industrial zone with outdoor space that's not already designated for parking or for some other very specific use. I believe the other dog daycare does have a very small outdoor area, they call it their outdoor deck, and it, I don't believe it's much larger than, you know, it's not a place for them to run around and get exercise. So my response to that is, one, it's not uncommon, especially in urban areas, and the other, that this daycare will function very much like a child daycare, in that they will be indoor, and it will be fashioned like an indoor park, if you will, will have ramps and other facilities-
Indoor play areas.
Yeah, play areas, as well as designated playtimes. So the dogs' handlers will be encouraging the dogs to keep playing and keep being active during the times that we've designated for that activity. This is not a replacement for parents to stop being responsible dog parents. We still expect that they're gonna get out on weekends, they're gonna play, they're gonna go for walks, they're gonna, you know, get that bonding and exercise that they need with their parents as well. So we're just providing a solution for the problem that is the long work hours and the commute, et cetera, but not a replacement for a responsible dog parent.
Okay, thank you. Could you come to the microphone, please?
Well, let's wait till we open up the public hearing, please.
So, they can answer the question about their outdoor area, but as far as I know, I've, I belong to a few forums and discussion boards with hundreds of dog daycare owners all over the country, and it's fairly common practice in an urban setting.
Okay.
I would like to say also that there are skylights in the building?
Yes, there are, there is natural sunlight, actually, it's not just completely closed off. And as Susan mentioned, these air purification systems that I'm going to be putting in place are very similar to the purification systems that you would find in a casino, where people are smoking constantly and indoors in a completely closed-up facility. So they do treat the air and clear out bacteria and odor, and ionize the air that way. So it's not gonna feel to them like they're locked in a little concrete jungle for 12 hours. It will be interactive, and they will get socialized.
Is this like a dog nursery school, where the parents drop them off and pick them up at the end of the day? Is that how it works?
Yeah, at the beginning of the day, I mean, I know my own dog is so excited to go in and hears and smells all the other dogs, and at the end of the day is completely tired and is pretty happy to come home.
And they go five days a week, or?
Yeah. People usually, it's more economical for people, the way the pricing schedules usually work, for them to, you know, sign up for monthly or longer periods, and, but usually people, I find, especially the types of people that take their dog to daycare, are people that tend to work from home at least once, if not more, times during the week. But it is more economical than not to purchase a longer-term plan, so, yeah, some dogs might come five days a week, but the reality of it is that some don't, just because of the way some people, especially in high-tech, work.
So during the time that you're operating, are people coming and going through the roll-up door, and is the door gonna be open all the day, or is it close off at 10 o'clock when people are supposed to stop bringing their dogs? I'm just, I'm wondering, partly because of the noise factor?
No, the roll-up door will remain open. It's not in this submission, because I didn't submit my plan for the front facade yet, but just at a really high level. My plan is, it is a Western theme, and my plan is to have the roll-up door be open, also for, you know, airing purposes, but there will be a barrier between the street and the main dog area. It's a, I'm, my concept is a Western-style wood kind of opening, double, double-open door. And that won't necessarily be barricaded, like people could possibly come in, but we're gonna be strongly discouraging people from either dropping off or picking up during that time, just because it does really disrupt the pack if dogs are coming and going, and they get all excited about a new member coming in in the middle of the day and stuff like that.
Well, so that door would be open all the time, or just during the drop-off times?
During business hours.
Okay, so is there a noise issue associated with that?
Chair Jeffrey?
If the door's open?
I may say something. I wouldn't be too concerned about the noise, when you consider that this is in the middle of our general industrial zone.
No, I understand that, but-
The only portion of the city where no residential is permitted, and the other uses on this block include Colter Steel and an engine rebuilding company and several other things.
Well, those are quiet businesses, aren't they, Charlie?
I might be worried about noise, no, just kidding. But noise is something where, part of the training that we do with the dogs is to make sure that we do our best to teach them to be quiet. So we're not gonna punish the dogs for barking, but we will try to discourage them from doing so. So one of the things that we do, that we will do, is implement timeout periods for excessive barking, or, you know, excessive play barking. I've been working with existing daycare owners that have used this method for that, and it's surprisingly quiet. I know it's hard to believe in a room with, you know, 30 dogs, but it is surprisingly quiet, because especially, the loudest times are during pickup and drop-off, just because the dogs get to know each other and they get excited, and then during pickup time, they smell their parents, and they get all riled up. So those are the loudest times during the day, once the pack is settled. It's very, it's very rare to have kind of, I'll call it a flare-up.
Okay, thank you.
What are your plans for maintenance of the sidewalk between the entrance to the building and the parking lot? Which, over time, will obviously be littered, you know, both urination and defecation. It's gonna be an ongoing problem. If the dog gets out of the car, they're gonna smell the other dogs, and the landscaping, on the sidewalking, you know, it's just, it's gonna be, over time, it's gonna be an ongoing problem.
I don't anticipate that it'll be a huge problem, to be perfectly, like, to be honest, because the way that the drop-offs usually work is they're so early in the morning that the dogs have already relieved themselves before getting in the car with mom and dad for the commute. So in terms of needing to go, it's rarely gonna be a problem where they roll up to the door and they just go right there. If that were to be the case, we'd deal with that immediately. I don't want any other dogs, dogs are funny little creatures, some of them eat poop and roll in poop, and all sorts of things that you don't-
Well, some of it's marking territory, though, right?
And some of it's marking territory, too, but, so we'd deal with it immediately as it happens. So we will have a greeter, and that greeter would be aware if any of that stuff happened, and would deal with that immediately.
Is there a hose hookup out there?
I'm sorry?
Is there a hose hookup on the exterior of the building?
I believe, yeah, there is, because there is a little bit of landscaping, as you saw in the pictures, there's some bushes that have watering system, and there's a hose out there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I will open the public hearing. Are there any citizens in the audience wishing to comment on this item? If so, please come forward, identify yourself, and sign in. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Commission?
Move approval.
I'll second that. I just, I'd like to suggest that condition of approval, one, de-installation and maintenance of improvements.
Wait, come back up to the microphone.
Sorry, I was just reminded. In the conditions of approval, I am aware that there are, there was suggestion for some building fees related to traffic impact and change of use. I believe that-
These, you should find them on your desk?
The preliminary fee calculations.
Right, right. So I am aware that those are there, and I, being that I actually wasn't aware of them initially, and they, for the type of business that I'm starting, are pretty significant impact to my budget and my bottom line there, I would like to be able to appeal those with city council.
I think the rules are those a 90-day period for appeal of fees?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, and you need to follow, there's a reference within here with the, to the statute, that you need to follow, but you need to file an appeal with the planning commission, state forth the reason. Commission, state forth the reason.
Okay.
And do it within 90 days.
Okay.
Not with the, with the planning department, I, I think I might've said commission.
Okay.
I would just like to note that we did review these fees to see if, uh, they could be reduced and what we found was that, um, you'll know, well, on the second page of the, of the preliminary fee calculations, that's the anal, that's the explanation of how the traffic impact fee was calculated. Um, it was treated as daycare. Now, we looked at the I T E, Institute of Transportation Engineers tables to see if there was any other use listed in those tables that came any closer to this type of facility and the I T E does not list anything that's even remotely close, closer than daycare to this. So, we stuck with that, but that use type was...
What about like a veterinary clinic or?
Not in the I T E tables.
Oh, okay.
Or a kennel?
Trip generate.
They don't have any kennel?
It's not in the I T E tables. There's nothing even close.
Animal services are just now becoming popular.
So, but we did not assign the entire square footage to that and you'll see most of the square footage was still assigned to office and warehouse. And this fee is comparable to what the other dog daycare facility, uh, paid for a traffic impact fee.
And that fee was not waived? For every dog has its day.
No, it was not.
Okay, thank you.
But however, as noted, she does have a, a right to appeal this to the City Council.
Okay. I just wanted to, thank you.
Um, as I was saying, on page two of the conditions of approval under item D, installation and maintenance of improvements, I'd like there to be an acknowledgement that the applicant, um, shall maintain the sidewalk in front of the building and parking lot. I just, the 12 parking spaces are located some distance from the entrance to the building and I know dogs and I know what's gonna happen over time and I'd like it acknowledged in writing that there's a, um...
Requirement.
A requirement for, for maintaining the sidewalk.
And associated landscaping?
And associated landscaping, yeah.
I would support that.
So, I'd like to suggest that to the motion maker.
Okay.
Okay? To the second or?
Commissioner Cardoza, you all right with that change?
That's fine.
Ready?
That's it.
All right, Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kane?
Aye.
Commissioner Troyding?
Aye.
Vice Chair Martin?
Aye.
Chair Jeffrey?
Aye.
Six ayes, the application is approved. Uh, this decision may be appealed to the City Council within 15 days, other than the traffic impact fee, which may be appealed within 90 days.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, moving on to our final public hearing this evening. It's, uh, Third Unit, located at 1051 45th Street. Maru?
Um, Chair Jeffrey, for my second recusal of the evening, uh, I'm within 500 feet of this property.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, uh, up here, slightly unusual. It's a lot more than last year.
Cookie break.
Good evening, uh, the property is located on the south side of 45th Street, between the Essex and Adeline Streets in the triangle neighborhood of the city. Uh, it's zoned R M, medium-density residential. The property is about 4,600 square foot and it contains two detached, single-family homes. Uh, the proposal includes converting, uh, the unit in the front, the lower level of the unit in the front, to another additional unit, bringing the total count of number of units to be three. Currently, we have a garage on the lower level and, uh, the rest of the area is gen, is, it's like a storage laundry room. That's gonna get converted into, the garage is gonna stay as it is and the rest of the area is gonna get converted into a living room, two bedrooms and a dining and a kitchen area. Uh, in terms of external modifications, what we have is ex, uh, additional windows on both the right and the left side, as shown on this, each left and right elevation. Uh, in the front, we are gonna have a new garage door to replace the existing, a new entryway, which is right here, and they are also going to modify the new entry stairs going to the upper-level u, unit. Uh, in terms of use and density, uh, in the R M district, as you know, 20 units per acre allowed by right, which can be increased to 45 units with a conditional use permit. For this site, this calculates to two units by right and five units with a conditional use permit. And, uh, with the proposal is for three units, which is about 28 units, uh, per acre. This is more or less in keeping with the surrounding density where you have a whole range, starting from 46 units per acre to a low of eight units and the average is about 21 units. In terms of parking, what exists now is one legal space contained in the existing garage. Uh, both the buildings were built prior to 1988, so the current planning, uh, the current parking situation is considered conforming. The third unit that is being proposed, however, will trigger the parking, the additional parking requirement of two, and this is being proposed between the two existing buildings right here. What this, this will lead to is creation of a new driveway, and this is the proposed driveway, which will then be accessed, uh, to the car, uh, parking spaces. Uh, the proposed driveway is gonna increase, uh, the curb cut substantially as there is already an existing driveway accessing the garage. Uh, in order to mitigate that, uh, we suggested that at least a drive, that, that there be landscaped strips and the driveway be, uh, bu, built of previous materials. We are also asking them, and as they've shown, replacing the current driveway and, uh, with, which is completely concrete, with some landscaping strips. Just to let you know that, uh, the new driveway is gonna involve removal of one street tree, uh, and this would obviously have to be replaced according to urban forestry ordinance that we have in place. Uh, with that, uh, I conclude my presentation. If there are any, uh, any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Yes, uh, I have a number of questions. The square footage...
Mm-hmm.
...shown seems to be a little bit difficult to understand. The building on the back is a two-story building, yet, uh, the square footage shown appears to be just what would be one floor of that building.
Uh, it's... It's, yeah, existing is one story, I think I mentioned it to be...
And the ground floor is just a basement?
That's right.
Well, are you talking about the building in the front or in the back?
In the back.
The, the back is one story.
It appears to be two stories. It has steep stairs going up on the plan, yeah?
It's a basement.
Oh, okay. So, it's a two-bedroom apartment and 600 square feet, is that correct?
Uh, in, in, 529, yeah. In the rear...
98, it says.
Are we, I'm sorry, are we talking about the front building or the second build?
The rear building.
Right.
Says rear unit 598 square feet.
529.
I, I have a different plan, I guess, than you do.
Uh, where are you?
On the lower right-hand corner.
On A1.
Okay. Oh, you're looking at the one on the, it's 598, hmm.
We don't have any other plans that show the rear building.
Staff report says 529 and the drawing says 598, which is correct.
It's 598, I must know.
Then, uh, the, um, it says front unit, is that one of the plans or both plans together?
It's both plans together, so the total square footage of the front unit is 930. There's no change in footprint of the front unit, no change in footprint or height.
Well, the footprint of the front unit now, uh, is approximately 864 square feet and, so this is footprint, is that what you're saying, on this A1 sheet, lower right-hand corner?
Area coverage. Yes, the area coverage.
Okay.
That's the area.
Okay. Uh, then, on the first-floor plan, uh, it's extraordinary that the living room is eight feet seven by 11 foot six. Um, the bedroom, two, is approximately eight foot three inches by seven foot six inches plus a little additional space where the door swings in. Uh, according to my calculations, this comes to 67.19 fi, square feet. The uniform building code says that the minimum room size is 70 square feet.
I'm sorry, where are you looking, Commissioner Cardoza?
Sheet A2.
Sheet A2, first-floor plan, bedroom two.
Nine and three, no.
It's dimensioned at 11 feet by 8 feet 6 inches.
Okay, if, uh, from that eight, 11, uh, that 11 feet is to the center of the wall and, uh, to the back of the wall where this closet is...
Right.
Uh, the closet is approximately, uh...
Three feet?
About two.
Uh, two, say it's, say it's two feet.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, the door swing, uh, additional sp, so if you take off two feet and you take off three inches for the thickness of the wall, you come down to eight foot three inches.
Eight, eight foot nine inches, is that right?
Oh, right, okay. Any rate, it's, it's an ex, you know, it's, it's very questionable if it even meets minimum standards. You know, I thought we were trying to improve things, uh, and, you know, a living room that's eight foot seven by 11 foot six, I mean, I guess it's legal, but is that what we wanna do? Additionally, uh, it shows the ceiling height is seven foot six, which again is absolute minimum. Any new construction is auto, automatically eight feet high. Now, this plan was prepared by Jaime Lopez, who calls himself an architectural designer. It's illegal in this state to use the ar, word architectural unless you're licensed as an architect. This name does not appear on the registry of licensed architects in the state of California.
Perhaps, uh, we could get the applicant to come up and speak?
Has the staff verified that in fact this existing ceiling height is seven foot six?
Uh, this was cleared by our plan check engineer. We did point out to make sure that this was, you know, indeed okay with him and he was fine with it.
He did go out and look at it?
Yeah, I mean, and, and he, he's okay with the, with this, uh, height ceiling.
And the floor plan as well?
Yes, yes. This has been reviewed by plan check.
It's just gonna be tight living quarters, it appears.
Sorry?
It's just gonna be a tight living quarter. Uh, and I would imagine this is gonna be a, a third rental unit?
That's my understanding. There's been no mention that it's gonna be a, that they're proposing condos in the future.
Okay.
This is being submitted as a condominium?
No.
It's, it's three, it'd be three, three rental units. It's two now and it would be three. Uh, well, perhaps we can hear from the applicant. Please step forward and identify yourself.
Hi, good afternoon to all.
And state your name, please.
Uh, my name is Jaime Lopez. I was the commissioned, uh, architectural designer for this project and I think, uh, I need to answer the, uh, the comment from, uh, Commissioner Cardoza. Yes, uh, I did, uh, specified it that I am just an architectural designer.
That's not a legal title. You cannot use the word architectural designer.
Uh, I did not emphasize that I was a registered architect, so, uh, I've been using...
You are not a registered architect.
Yeah, I'm not. That's why I, I just said that I'm an architect.
You can use the title designer, but not architectural designer. You're subject to fine.
I, I have a business license to undertake this kind of a business.
But it doesn't give you the right to use the title architectural designer. It's illegal in this state.
I believe it's the term architect that cannot be used without a license.
You cannot use architectural either. I suggest you check the, uh, website for the Architectural Registration Board on that matter.
And then actually, uh, I have been, uh, doing this business, uh, for about three and a half years now, when I was, uh, laid off from my former job. So, uh, what, what I was doing is, uh, merely renovation works, addition, remodeling, and I think I did one where I was commissioned to do a two-story building, where the, uh, the planner or the building official I was dealing with said that I don't need to, to have it signed.
You're right, you don't need to sign it, but you can't use the title. That's what I'm saying.
What, what I, what I meant there is, uh, I, I don't need to get a, a licensed engineer to, to do the signing for me, although I did the, the preparation of the drawings and all that, so...
That's correct. You can't use the word architect or architectural.
Okay, uh, I think I, I'm clear with that. I can change that, you know, just plainly designer. Okay, if I may continue? Yeah, first of all, I, I would like to thank the, the planning department and the, uh, the planning commission for having us here and be heard, uh, for this project. Uh, my name is, is again Jaime Lopez. I am the, uh, the project engineer, oh, pra, the project designer of the proposed, uh, first-floor conversion and renovation of an existing, uh, two-story residential building located that the, at 1051 45th Street, that is, uh, between Adeline and Essex Streets. As mentioned by, uh, Planner Desai, the site is, uh, having two separate or detached buildings, residential buildings. The one we are renovating is the front unit, which is having two floors, and we are just converting the lower portion, which, uh, currently now is being used just on a storage and part of the laundry room, and thereby creating a, a third unit at the lower level. So, if I may just get the liberty of, you know, relating the events, uh, of the ordeal I experienced from the time I, from the time of conception till this day.
Hopefully, it wasn't too much of an ordeal.
No, not really. It will take only about, I think about, uh, five minutes, so, this will really, uh, you know, make the, uh, the commission un, understand what, what I was, uh, what I have been doing. Actually, the proposed project was conceived in December, in last year, 2005, and everything was based on the requirements of the owner or the applicant, Mr. and Mrs. Sigbal Kular, they are here right now. And during that time, I was informed already by the owner that he made several trips to planning department just to get information regarding the proposed project. And Mr. Kular was specifically, was instructed to submit a preliminary drawing for review by one of the planning staff. So, it was only on January 2006 when I was commissioned to prepare the design and, as a part of my contract with the owner, I initially consulted the planning department for guidelines on the procedures of the city regarding permits and code compliances. And after the initial contact with the department, I submitted sets of drawings, sets of required drawings in February for the preliminary design review. It was reviewed and approved on March 5 of this year. I got a copy of the, of the, of the approved plan, which I was, uh, marking as number one. Uh, this is for your reference, we, we can look at it, uh, in a little while. And then I was instructed to submit the construction drawings already. This means the final, uh, construction drawings, these are the working drawings for architectural, structural, mechanical, electrical plumbing and all the other disciplines. This is for me to submit and apply for the building permit application already. Also, it was in March, you know, because of the, the owner decided to, you know, to wish to start with the project immediately. Uh, the set drawings were prepared and submitted, we submitted several, I think it was five sets we submitted, and we filed this and we paid for the design review, design review as required. It was only last April 3, 2006, that we received a letter from the planning department that an error occurred in the processing of our application. I suppose... I suppose it was the error of the planning department in the first place to approve the preliminary drawings. We could have avoided delay if we had been informed at the initial contact of the error. Even then, according to the letter, the proposed project would require now a conditional use permit in addition to the design review permit that we have paid already in the first place. And then this must be reviewed and approved by the planning commission. After a meeting held on April five, that is after two days receiving the letter, due to this new development, we applied the next day for the required conditional use permit. We submitted the new twenty sets, I think it's twenty-two sets of reduced copies of drawings, pertinent drawings to the planning department, and paid again the processing fees required. Then during the months of April and May, while waiting for the, for their comment, we had already a continuous, several meetings were held already, and telephone discussion with the, with the current planning staff about the outcome of the preliminary design review of the submitted drawings. On May twelve, two thousand and six, a letter was received defining now the several items that are to be revised in the drawings if we really wish to be heard by the planning commission. These are now, you know, after a few days, I, I submitted the revised drawings and, you know, addressing all the, the comments mentioned in that letter. I requested too, in my letter, that we, we be included in the agenda of the scheduled last month meeting, I think it was May twenty-fifth of the last month, planning commission meeting, but we missed that date for some reason. So, actually, I did not stop from there. I continued coordinating with the current planner and came out with the final, the final preliminary design, which was shown to you, you know, by Ms. Desai, for us to resume it and be heard on today's meeting. I submitted the revised drawings on June eighth, two thousand and six. Now, this is incorporating all the changes and instruction of the current planner. After the planning department have reviewed our application, we believe that the application for conditional use permit should be approved. The proposed project would not adversely affect the neighboring properties, but it would make a positive contribution to the existing development of the community characterized by a mixture of residential units from single to multifamily dwellings. It is also ensured that when completed, the renovation building is compatible, is going to be compatible, and in harmony with the existing design and use of structures on neighboring properties, and of course, the, the current building as well. I think that will conclude my presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Actually, I, I read the staff report. I read the staff report, if you may want to look at page, I think it's page three. And may I say too, that the, the staff report was made, you know, actually, it was so well-defined and well, the project was well-described, all the, the conditions of approval were all mentioned here, which I did already in my drawing. But I, but this was reviewed by us and the owner together, and we just feel that there is only one item that, you know, I, I think, I would say, need to be studied, that is the requirements on the new front steps or the staircase to be of wood design. So we just felt that the, this may be compatible with the original architectural style of the house, which is out of clapboard sidings, but I don't think it would, you know, it would, it would be in harmony with the, with the surrounding neighboring. Mostly are having the same material as we have now. It's actually precast steps seated on steel stringers with steel balusters. I got some pictures here. Actually, in my, in my final drawing, I did not show the, the make or the type of the staircase that I'm gonna be doing. Actually, I just followed the, the comment that I, I need to flip or, you know, put the staircase not in a straight plight, but to put a landing in between, which I did in my drawing.
Are, are you talking about the front stair?
The front steps, yeah. Yes, ma'am. If I may just show some of this.
You can put those on the overhead projector there.
What I'm trying to show here are the, the types of staircase. This is, this is again a, a prototype of using concrete steps landing with the steel balusters. This is another one. Actually, this is a straight plight, just one straight plight staircase. It looks like wood to me, Mrs. Kular, is it wood, of wood? But it looks like a dilapidated now, so these are just some of the worry.
That doesn't mean that it can't be refinished and maintain the character of that building and the street.
Yeah, I would probably add that using steel would be of lesser maintenance, unlike the wood, especially the, the buildings will, will have to be rented, so if the, the tenant would not be that kind to, you know, maintain the staircase, then it will look like this.
Well, I think it's up to the property owner to maintain the staircase.
Yeah, and also, of course, we have to, you know, tell them that.
Not the tenant.
Then this one is again a, a straight plight staircase. Do you have the, our picture, the existing? Can I, I can just show one? This is the existing building. So actually, what we intend to do now is coming from the same, you know, the start of the, the step, I will have it probably ending up midway and then turning towards the driveway. This is specifically shown on my drawing.
So you intend to cut the existing stair?
Maybe not, maybe make a new one. It all depends with the, if it's still, you know, that strong to, to just repair it, then we're gonna do it.
No, but you, if you're gonna, if you're gonna make an L shape, if you're gonna have a landing and wrap it, you're gonna have to cut that stair. Do, do you plan on wrapping, having a landing and wrapping it with wood?
Yes, ma'am. Or maybe, maybe not.
That would, that would look really strange, and that would not be consistent with the street.
If we really need to, you know, if the, the planning department would decide really to go on wood, definitely I would have to remove the whole thing and put a new wood structures, wood stringers, wood railings, you know, following all the, the code compliances.
So what are you doing to the rear stair?
Rear stair is actually relocated now, as, as told by the designer, because of the new driveway that will lead to the new parking lots at the back between the new, the two buildings.
So you have to completely redo the rear stair?
Same thing.
Yes.
You're gonna have to redo it.
We have to redo it, probably.
And it's gonna be wood?
No, he's relocating it.
I'm relocating it already, but the thing is, is it going to be wood or steel? I think the, the planning department did not mention that yet, so they were only concerned about the, the front stairs. So it's either I go for wood or for steel.
The drawing shows that it's metal.
Yeah, it was just, it was just relocated. It's showing a metal, a metal or steel stairs.
And it has a turn to it right now. Right. Have you thought about reusing the front stairway in the back and the straight stairway to rebuild the front stairway as a wooden stairway and simply relocate the concrete stairs to the rear where they wouldn't be visible from the street, but they would give you a straight shot down the side of the building? Have you thought of that?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. I don't, I don't have any more questions of the applicant.
I have the applicant here, if you wish to. Yes, sir.
The conditions of approval call for a hammerhead on that rear parking area so that they can drive out facing forward on the driveway, but it's not shown on the plan that we have.
Yeah, still, actually, I just got the, the, this staff report two days, three days back.
It looks like...
So we, if, if the hammerhead would be proposed here, I would probably have it, I will probably cut a portion of the lawn that is on the left side of the, or, I would say, towards the right side of the property line, just beside the existing building two, which is the, the rear unit.
Well, it could only, the hammerhead would only be five feet deep. Is that acceptable?
Five feet deep, why is that?
No, it's nine feet wide.
Because there's only five feet between the edge of the driveway and the other building.
No, no, I got it at nine feet wide on the other side.
Well, I guess my question would be, what if you have someone parked in, in space one and space two wants to get out? They, how are they gonna, there's no place for them to turn around, they're gonna have to back out.
Well, that's why we put in a condition that a hammerhead be added.
Yeah, but I don't think that there's enough, yeah, I don't think there's enough area to do that.
Only five feet of depth for the hammerhead, between the edge of the driveway and the face of the building.
You can only do the turning once this is, you know...
No, no, the hammerhead would be tucked back between the building and the property line in the area that's marked lawn, which is eight feet wide.
That's right, yeah. And the nine feet on the other side.
Okay, so, so the hammerhead would be eight feet deep, then?
It'd be eight feet wide.
Eight feet wide, which is not very...
And it would be however deep it needed to be, probably about fifteen feet or so, eighteen feet maybe. The applicant originally showed a parking space there, in that lawn area.
That would be a substandard width, wouldn't it, eight feet?
It would be okay for a compact space.
We're talking about the east side of the existing building?
Correct, in the rear.
I don't know if there's adequate, I'd like to see something that shows that there's adequate space to maneuver in there. I'm, I'm not convinced.
Chair Jeffrey, I'd like to clarify one thing. The applicant mentioned a letter from us suggesting certain revisions to this plan that were then submitted in early June, and you may recall, this item was listed on, I believe it was your May agenda. We continued it because at that time, as we had informed the applicant, we were ready to recommend denial of this application. The original proposal eliminated the existing garage in the front house. That would have had the benefit of making that unit larger.
Larger.
But it also would have required a parking variance, because then the, the property would not have had enough parking to meet the requirements of the code. As it is now, under the code, all we can require is parking sufficient to meet the parking requirement for the new unit, plus retaining whatever existing parking may already be on the site. So there's currently, the, currently the only parking on the site is this existing garage in the building. So that would remain, and then the two additional parking spaces, which would be sufficient to meet the requirement of the new unit, are in the back, so the project no longer needs a variance. But that was, that was the change that was made, and I think it's important for you to understand that those changes were, were in order to get the staff to recommend approval as opposed to denial of this application.
So, but the original garage was, appears to be a tandem, is that true? So there were two spaces in the original garage, whereas now there would be one, or it's, no, it's the laundry's back.
No, I believe the original garage is as shown here.
One other question I have, because I don't see that shown on this drawing, the tree that would be removed to provide access to the driveway, where is that tree gonna be replaced on the street?
I had it inside the lot, which is at your...
Okay, but I guess my question is, then, is it under the jurisdiction of the city if it's on the property? Because at this point now, it's, it's covered under the urban forestry ordinance.
If the tree is not replaced on street, and I think we anticipated that it would not be, that it would just be removed, then a replacement value fee would have to be paid under the urban tree ordinance.
Actually, I did want to ask about the existing rear unit and counting the steps. There, there are nine to ten steps from the ground to the front door and the back door of that unit. What's on the ground level of that building?
It's much lower than the, the first unit, the, the front unit.
It's much lower than what?
The, the floor height of the, the rear unit is much lower compared with the, with the, the front unit.
Is there something underneath?
Just a store, basement, a store.
If you could come describe the condition there.
It's just a basement underneath, which is not that high.
And talk into the microphone, so everyone at home can hear you.
Excuse me, ma'am.
It's just a little basement underneath the whole house, and when you go in, it's just, I mean, it barely makes it, I mean, I can touch the ceiling.
It's similar to conditions to the front building.
The front one is a little bit higher, underneath spaces.
Excuse me, excuse me, we need the names of each speaker before you speak, please.
Okay, I'm Bali Kular, and I'm the owner. And that's my husband, Iqbal Kular. And so what it is, in the front unit, it's a little bit higher, it was built after, I guess, so underneath the basement is a little bit higher, and the back unit is a little bit lower. The basement is kinda, not that much space. I mean, you can walk underneath, but it's not that high.
Is there laundry under there? Is it storage?
There is a laundry, there's a laundry space just at the, as you enter for that unit, but in the, when we built this, this thing, we are planning to have all the laundry together for the front unit outside in the back, I think he drew.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Lopez. But in the back unit, you can walk in, but you can't, it's not high enough to make anything underneath, so to speak, so...
Without lifting the building?
Without, yeah.
When you cannot stand in there, you know, if I had to go, they have to go, you know,
You have to bend over.
So you have to lift it up to, if we want to make anything, so we are not gonna...
Okay.
And what's between the two houses now?
Plain ground, there was a grass in between where, where we are gonna have the parking now.
So it's green, it's a lawn?
Uh...
Just green, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we, there was concern expressed about the size of bedroom two being very small. Obviously, you've thought about that. Have you, is there a reason this could not be a one-bedroom that has a decent-sized living room?
That would reduce one of the parking requirements too, which would then make the parking easier for you.
Yeah, they're meeting that anyway, assuming it's...
Well, they may be meeting it, but if the hammerhead doesn't work, that'd be a problem.
We were thinking about putting the bedroom to start with, both bedroom in the back, so the living room will come in the front, but then we kinda changed, looking at the stairs, and then you're gonna be, from the living room, you'll, the entry, so we changed our mind onto the design.
Any more questions?
No, that's it for my questions, yeah.
Should we open the public hearing? Thank you. Okay, with that, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Are there any citizens wishing to comment on this item? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners.
I, do you want to go ahead, Buzz?
No, I don't know.
I guess the first, I'll start general. We didn't see a landscape plan for this project, or is that what the site development plan is supposed to contain as well?
Yes, that's it.
I mean, we're actually losing a tr... Okay, I mean, we're actually losing a tree in the street frontage, and I think we've had discussions, lengthy discussions about these conversions and additional units on existing buildings, and how important it is to be very clear about improvements, and that includes landscape improvements. So I'm, I guess disappointed that we don't get to also look at a landscape plan that shows what your intention is in the yard area, including, um, options for tree replacement there. I see a, a space between the existing driveway and the proposed driveway where you probably could fit the street tree just a little bit east of the existing trunk location. It would separate the two driveways and make it less likely that whole area turns into concrete. And it may make the turning movement a little more difficult, but you're gonna have to face that. I mean, people face that all the time in this type of neighborhood, getting in and out with parked cars. So you could actually, I think you could accommodate that replacement tree right there in front of your home and break up some of that paving. And I think overall, your, your, um, property could be greatly improved with some additional landscaping. You're getting another unit out of this, so there's definitely some financial incentive behind these changes that you're making. I would not approve a project that had your proposed front stair design. I think it, it has to have a, a front stairway that has to fit with character, with the character of the existing building. And it has to be consistent. You can't have a, a metal concrete stair, two-thirds the length, and then turn into a, a wooden stair, the, the remainder of the flight. I don't have a problem relocating that existing front stair to the back if you can do it structurally, and it will save you the cost there, you don't have to cut up the stair system in the process. I am concerned about the interior space. This is where someone's going to live, and I think that the, the interior height, you're lifting the building anyway. There's no reason you can't lift it another foot to get some.
They're not lifting the building.
We are not lifting the building.
You're digging down.
We still have the, the seven feet six.
They say that it's been.
Actually, uh.
The building department has verified that it is in fact seven feet six inches.
What's the existing flooring in there now? Is it just concrete, dirt? So you're gonna.
Except in where the car has been parked. I assume that's concrete there.
Concrete?
Yeah, it's a semi-paved right now.
So, did buildings sign off in this, uh, understanding that there's gotta be a flooring in there, and then they measure up from the floor to get the seven and a half inch, or did they just measure from the floor?
They have a six, they have a six inch from the finished, the floor, they have six inches for a floor slab.
If I may say it, uh.
So it's eight, it's eight, approximately eight feet before, without the flooring. Eight, right now, it's measured at eight feet.
That's, it's.
So you're going to rebuild the foundation around the perimeter of the building?
Yeah, actually, uh, I think I mentioned that in my presentation, that we, we filed for the actual building permit. That means we, we got all the necessary structural drawings, and they were seen already by the, by LPP2A, who is the designated checkers, and they saw already the drawings, and they did some comments already. Actually, I am, I am also retrofitting the, the existing lower wall. That is, uh, making the, the foundation more stronger than now, and then adding what is required, like, putting the R-13 wall insulation for the exterior walls, so and so. So these are all taken care of in the actual drawing.
Is this an existing concrete or brick foundation around the perimeter of the front building?
We got the grade beam all around, concrete grade beam foundation.
And you're going to excavate down to the edge of the wall to, and to the foundation, existing foundation system? And how deep are you excavating under this building?
I would say about six inches like that.
And then you'll pour a slab, a reinforced slab, is that it?
That's right. We need to put, you know, uh, the base course. And of course, all the necessary wa, waterproofing or the barrier, the vapor barrier, before casting the concrete. I got the, I got all of this in my drawings when I, when I was informed about the, the application for conditional use permit. They were already checking it. I was already negotiating with the planner. So that, that's where we stopped, and then again, we continued dealing with them on the conditional use permit requirement.
Is there a cost savings to not lifting the building and simply replacing the foundation at grade? The work, the labor involved in having by, someone excavate by hand, I, I question whether you're saving.
Well, yeah, it's highly unusual construction process, but.
To be so encumbered and not have the option to simply raise the building up to give some breathing space to the people who are going to be living in that downstairs unit. The other question I have is, do you intend to lower the existing garage elevation as well at the same time?
No, I don't need it. It's, it's already down there.
So shouldn't there be shown a step down from the existing grade of the concrete pad? You gotta walk down a step to get into the kitchen area then?
Well, it'd be a six-inch step, I guess, is that?
Right, is that your intention? Is there gonna be a step down into?
About four to six inches down.
So you'd step down into the unit?
From the living to the garage.
That's not unusual.
No, it just would be nice to understand the plans by having it shown on the plan. You know, I just, I have, I have concerns about the livability of this space.
The, the windows are very small. Uh, this living room has one three-foot-wide window. Bedroom the same, uh, the front bedroom two the same. I haven't done any checks to see if it meets minimum standards for windows.
For light and ventilation.
Light and ventilation. Uh, does it meet Uniform Building Code standards?
Yes, sir, we will be doing the, the four-by-four square feet, uh, win, aggressive windows, especially for the window, for the bedrooms. So there will be an openable area of two-by-four.
I would like to confirm that the applicant has had extensive discussions with the plant check engineer.
That's right.
Regarding the floor heights, because, uh, the floor, the ceiling height, which was a concern for us as well. And he has confirmed, he's told me that this is fine. So as far as the building code is concerned, uh, what's, what's being proposed does comply.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, you're, you're excavating to a depth uncertain below. I don't understand how that's going to tie into your existing foundation, which may be sitting at the same height as the bottom of your concrete pore. And then we've got an unfinished ceiling that I, I don't know what the end product's gonna be interior to the space.
Need to speak into the microphone, ma'am.
Somebody actually went in there to see before, from the building department, I don't know who it was, engineer or somebody, to see what we are asking for, and I think when they measured, they measured, you know how the beams come down?
Yeah.
From that to the down, whatever, the floor. That's what, that's what was measured.
Right, but it's unfinished, so you're going to have some finish that's.
So maybe.
Five-eighths of an inch or half an inch or something.
We will be installing the sheet truck directly on the floor joists.
Right.
If you need to retrofit some of the floor joists, we're gonna do it, so.
Right, and then we have concrete and an excavation in the other direction. So my concern is we end up with a finished product that is compromised in something that's not, in my opinion, gonna be a very desirable space with, you know, a minimum amount of windows, a minimum clearance.
Minimum-size rooms, uh.
Right.
Change the size of the windows.
Well, we can change the size of the window, that's no big, I mean, all new windows we have to buy, so it can be bigger. It doesn't have to be four-by-four, it can be whatever.
But you're constrained by the stairway in the front, but you could include a window on the west wall in the living room area. You could add an extra window in the west wall. Uh, I just, I see improvements that, um, should be made to the new unit. The new unit that you're asking for. If this were the existing condition, I would understand. I wouldn't have, you know, a say in it, as far as I'm concerned. But this is the new unit that you're building that you're expecting someone to live in and rent from you. And it just, the living room is half the length of a car. And when you look at the garage and what's designed for the garage, and that just, it's not okay, in my opinion, to have a space that, that, just seems unacceptably small.
Well, and, and also, I ha, I still have concerns about the parking area. I'm, I'd like to see a drawing with some turning movements to show if it's gonna work. I, I can't support this, this proposal as it's currently presented as. I, I'm just, I'm very uncomfortable with that. It's too tight in there, and I need to be convinced that it's gonna work.
And I, I guess I'd also like to hear from staff that, um, they have, and fully understand the floor treatment on the proposed unit and how it's going to tie into the existing foundation system of the home. You're gonna be excavating down below the existing foundation.
Well, that's not something we typically pay a lot of attention to, uh, under the use permit and design review, which is required for this application. We're more concerned about the exterior appearance of the property and, and whether or not the permitted use or conditionally permitted use would adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood.
Well, if you're in a, what I, if it appears to be a substandard unit, I think.
If it complies with the building code, then, you know, we don't have a basis for looking at those kind of construction details at the planning level.
Well, Jim, I think we got enough site it concerns.
Well, no, that, but that assumes that the excavation's gonna work, that the floor pore's gonna work, that you're gonna be able to get a unit that works out of this, and I question.
We're deferring to the extensive discussions they've already had with the plant check engineer in the building division on those issues. And he seems to be satisfied that it would comply with the building code.
And it's feasible.
And the building department will inspect at, um, after construction before a certificate of occupancy is issued.
And that it's actually, this, it's structurally feasible to accomplish this approach to excavate down below the foundation?
That's not our area of expertise.
Has a structural engineer signed off on this in any way?
No, it, structural engineer has not signed off because the building permit has not been issued, but it has been reviewed by a plant check.
Structural engineers signed the plans that were submitted.
They haven't been.
I don't think that's required in this case.
It's not required in this case.
Yeah, it's.
I don't believe it is.
I would, um.
Wow.
Urge the planning commission that the findings that are required to make or deny this, um, application are set forth in the resolution, and that, that, that's the legal basis. That's the legal basis by which you can approve or deny this application.
But what aren't, what we're doing is saying, yes, you can have another unit here based on what you've shown us, or no, you can't have another unit based on what you're showing us. Isn't that basically what we're looking at with the use permit?
Yes, based, as, as Ms. Victor said, based on the conditional use permit and design review findings that are set forth in the resolution. So if you have concerns that you want them to address, uh, they should be done in the context of these findings.
Of the staff findings.
No, no, that's not what I mean. The findings in the, in the, uh, resolution, our standard format is.
Oh, I see.
That the text in light type is the text out of the code. That's the finding that must be made. The text in bold type is our language suggesting how that finding can be made, which you are certainly free to modify as you did with the Chiron Tree application. So for conditional use permit, it's section nine dash four point eight, two point one, three, subsections A through F of the code, those are the findings. And for design review, it's nine dash four point eight, four point four B, subsections one through six.
I just, under section two, two, on page three, the, um, finding is, "The building structure or signs shall relate congru, congruously to its site and property in the immediate and adjacent areas, and shall not be of such poor quality of design as to adversely affect the environmental quality or desirability of the immediate areas or neighboring areas, and shall not impede the benefits or occupancy of existing property or environmental quality thereof in such ways as," or this, my eyesight's going here. "The stability and value of improved or unimproved real property in such areas are produced, the generation of property in such areas with attendant deterioration of conditions affecting the health, safety, and general wear and foot welfare of the community." And I, in my opinion, looking at this current design with a bedroom space with a door that opens into the bed, with a closet that's there, with a hallway, it just, it doesn't feel like this is going to contribute. This unit, in its current design, is going to contribute to an improvement of this neighborhood.
What do you think about the one-bedroom then?
That would be acceptable.
And that would also, I, I think we also have an issue with the parking required for a two-bedroom unit, which is causing us some, some problems here. And if we are reducing the bedrooms and therefore reducing the parking requirement, the maneuverability might work better. There would be more room for landscaping in the back, and there's, there's more things that you could do.
So maybe we'll go with one-bedroom then. We'll just kinda, so how does that work? If I, if we go with one-bedroom, he designs as, do we have to go through the hall, everything again, and?
You need to come back to the commission again with a re, with a new design.
New design and come for the hearing and all that again?
Yes, that's right.
That would be design review and, well, it'd be.
No, it's still a conditional use permit.
Because of the density.
Uh, right, and the use. The use is a multifamily residential. Anything that's three units or more is multifamily residential, which requires a use permit in the RM district, regardless of the density.
And if we gave direct, simply gave direction to staff that this existing, or the proposed unit should be redesigned as a one-unit, that you resolve the issues with staff to staff satisfaction, that's not sufficient?
I, I think it should come back to, to the commission.
Okay.
But I, I think there's, there's either, one, this hearing can be continued, and, and you could agree to submit a redesign, or if the planning commission would like, could either approve it or could deny it. If you deny it, we will have to come back at the next planning commission with the appropriate findings. Which you've just stated some of the findings that we would come back with.
Right.
Yes, you've, you've given us enough direction that we could craft findings for denial if that's what you wanted to do.
I think it would make sense to give the applicant the opportunity to look at a redesign that would enhance, that would enhance the front of the building, that would include stairs that are compatible with the architectural style, that would give enough room in the interior spaces, that would deal with the parking issues, that would improve the landscaping in the front, that would locate, relocate a street tree, and a whole number of the other concerns that we voiced. And if we continued it to allow them to do that, then does, would that address your concerns?
Yeah.
I think it would, it would save a little bit of time, because otherwise, if we did recommend a denial, you'd do the findings, and if, it would, it would take you more time.
Yeah.
Yeah, it will be another month for me to present it.
Right.
Well, you have to come back next month or whenever anyway.
Right, you'd have to come back, but I think, I think they would, it would take them longer if we went through the denial process than just continuing the public hearing.
Well, plus, they wouldn't have a project if it were denied, unless they appealed to the city council, which would then elongate the process further. And no guarantee of approval there either.
Right.
So what is the minimum size of the window that we need, and how many windows do we need?
Well, if you take out that existing, the second bedroom, it automatically gives you another window in the living room, and I think you could accommodate a, a third window in the living room.
It's up to your designer to figure out how the window makes the room work.
Okay.
I got a question on the, the windows. The, the upper floor is having now all these, uh, hang-type, single-hang-type windows. So it looks like they're, they're out of code, but what we are doing is only the lower floor. If we need to change the size of the windows at the bottom or at the lower level, wouldn't it be so, you know, awkward-looking? You know, you're having this wall-hang type at the top, and then a new sliding or probably sliding windows at the bottom.
Your plan shows different type windows anyway. The bottom one has smaller panes than the upper one does.
Right.
And, uh, the window on the front of the building appears to be narrower than the one on the side of the building.
You don't have an option in your front window because of your stairway there.
Yes, sir.
It's set in its width because of the front stairway.
I mean, if you're gonna put in a different stairway, a better solution would be move the stairway over to the side of the building so that you could put a window near the door, and the stairway wouldn't block that entire front. and the stairway wouldn't block that entire front. But that's, you know.
Well, it's balanced now. And then, and there is a porch rail. The solid porch rail is part of the original building.
Yeah, that's true.
Then be compromising.
And it allows a little bit more room for putting that tree near the property line.
Yeah, that's true.
I'm sorry, I missed that. What were you talking about? The porch railing and moving?
The location of the front stair.
Moving the front stairs from the center?
Yeah, that would, that would detract from the character of the building and its compatibility with the street. So we don't want to do that.
Well, it'd still be coming off the front. It would just be moving over three feet, by the way.
We also want the tree.
Want the tree. I think that's probably more important.
Well, I think Gail had a great suggestion and I sensed it was a motion.
Which.
And can we add the parking plan be revised too then?
Right, I think you touched on it, didn't you, Gail?
And I repeat what I heard. The points that Commissioner Donaldson raised included front stairs compatible with the architecture of the building, more room on the inside or more spacious rooms on the inside, which I assume means one bedroom instead of two. Parking, revising the parking and now needing only one parking space. Landscaping in the front and looking at the street trees.
If they wish to keep two parking places because there are three units here, then they should show a plan with the hammerhead.
We need to understand that the parking will work whichever way it's being done.
Don't we typically require a landscape plan for the property? Not just the front of the property?
Yes, on the, let me just comment on that. We've told the applicant what's neat, what the commission requires in terms of landscape plan, and this is what we got. And we didn't want to delay this hearing any further. So that's why you have what you have.
I'd like to see a landscape plan for your whole property, not just the frontage.
And in conformance with this commission's standard requirements, that would include species or at least examples of species and locations of pavement and walkways and fences and gates.
Correct.
What else am I forgetting? Ground cover shrubs, trees.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And I think that the direction that you heard earlier from Commissioner Martin about looking at the possibility of not doing one huge curb cut but keeping the existing driveway curb cut and planting a street tree between the two new driveways, that would, that would be a good thing to look at as well.
Is the applicant clear in terms of what the commission has directed, staff? If there are any questions, please go ahead and ask them now.
Yeah, I think I need to go back to the windows again. Would it be, you know, your advice for me to change the whole windows? The make, you know, the, like putting them all in the sliding doors, you know, or just to get that code, the compliance?
Well, it looks like you put in double-hung windows that match the, presumably come close to matching the ones up above.
Just like what I was saying, the upper floor window, the existing windows are quite narrow. So they're not, they're no longer, you know, in conformity with the code.
You don't have an option in your front window, which is the important visible window anyway. The window in the front needs to be that width. You don't have an option there.
What about the side, along the west and the east side?
Why would you? Not if they're going to redesign this?
I'm not terribly concerned about that.
I mean, it's your living room. If you don't care how the windows work, why?
I think that the main thing is that it be architecturally compatible with the style of the building and that there'd be light coming into the downstairs unit.
Is the commission concerned about the rear stairs? Do you want those also to be of wood? Or do you mind if they're the concrete stringer things?
If they can salvage the stringer, I don't, doesn't bother me.
It would be great to be able to recycle something.
It's not visible from the street.
That was our feeling. That's why we didn't have a condition about that.
Yeah, so I think whatever, whatever fits and that possibly you can use that you currently have in the front would be fine.
It looks like though that you couldn't relocate them because the existing stairs have a landing. And it shows one run with a steel beam underneath it. So the only one that could be relocated would be from the front of the building.
Well, that's what we were talking about, relocating the one in the front and put it in the back to the rear entry. Where it's going to be, have to be relocated from the existing.
Anyway, yeah.
If it works.
So that was a motion by Gail?
I don't think you really need a motion. You can just continue this to, I guess, are we going to continue the public hearing?
Did you close the public hearing?
Oh, yeah, yes, she did.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, did you?
I did.
You could reopen it and continue it or we could? I don't think it much matters. We're going to re-advertise this anyway.
I would just, you don't need a motion. It will be continued if you want. We may reopen the public hearing at the.
Okay.
And we'll bring it back when they're ready.
And if it's a redesign, then you should reopen the public hearing to take any comments.
Okay.
The only other thing I'd ask of staff is some, if it's possible to have some additional comfort level of the building height of the proposed unit, the interior height of the proposed unit and how that is going to work? That it is going to be feasible?
If you like, we can ask the plant check engineer to be here to explain.
I think that would be helpful.
I don't think they need to sit through the meeting. As long as you've confirmed in advance, that's fine.
I mean, I guess, you know, we don't want to belabor this, but I will anyway. I mean, I guess one thing, I'm not a structural engineer, but I'm just sort of wondering about the seismic suitability of that solution. Yeah?
Of what solution?
Of the proposed.
Foundation?
Excavating down and redoing the foundation.
Without redoing the foundation?
Yeah.
I mean, I thought when you remodeled a building, you had to bring all parts of it up to current code. But apparently that's not the case with residential properties in the city. Is that correct?
I can't answer that. You'd have to talk, we'd have to talk to the building division about that.
Maybe they can provide us some direction on this. It'd be very helpful. Okay.
See you in a month, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Shall we go through or do you want to take a ten to five minute break?
Let's go.
Okay, let's do like that. Okay, we're on to our study sessions this evening. And the first study session is Granite Expo located at forty forty-one, forty sixty-five Hollis Street. Is this yours, Maru?
I guess most people play our screens.
Okay, this is a remodel of an existing, two existing buildings. The site is sort of, the site consists of four parcels. Three parcels are located at the corner of Fortieth and Hollis Street. And across Holden Street is a parking lot, which is also part of the project site. The first, the main area of the site, which is about, it's about seventy-three thousand square feet, consists of two buildings. One is a single-story building, which is right here, which is labeled Building One. And the second is Building Two or the Clairecom Building, which is a two-story building. What the proposal is to remodel this and convert it into some retail space, retail showroom. So the Building One, the one-story building, would be converted entirely into a retail showroom. Part of Building Two would be converted to accommodate twenty-eight parking spaces. The remainder would be a warehouse. The second floor would be associated office area. The exterior modifications include the changes in converting, and I'll get to the elevation in a minute, is converting existing windows into storefront windows on both Hollis Street as well as Fortieth Street. Creating a new entryway on Fortieth Street. Creating a new landscape area in this little nook on Fortieth Street. As well as introducing landscape improvements in the current parking lot, which is here. This would include removing the chain link fence with a picket fence and introducing some more landscaping strips right here and additional trees. In terms of just going on to some design changes, like I said, these, the existing are converted into storefront windows. There's an existing door, which will be converted into a door. And this is Hollis Street elevation. They are going to be removing the paint on the Building One to expose the brick facade. And the rest of the building is going to stay as it is. On the Fortieth Street elevation, which is right here, this is again Building One. And what you would see is removal of paint and exposing the brick facade. These are the new storefront windows. This is the new entryway. This is on Fortieth Street, but Building Two. Again, what they're going to be doing, actually, it's right here, I'm sorry. So this would be Fortieth Street, but Building Two elevation. They're going to be introducing granite tile waste coast, which will wrap itself around Holden Street as, well, not anymore. Sorry, I guess it's just on the Fortieth Street elevation. They are proposing two signs, two signs, one on Hollis and one on Hollis and one on Fortieth Street. They are also proposing four banners, which are right here on Fortieth Street. These banners would be about twelve feet by two feet and would be made of, they would be like wall rivets made of canvas or vinyl PVC. In terms of use, the proposed uses, retail, office, warehouse uses are conditionally permitted in the aisle district. And they are compatible with the surrounding mixes of commercial, residential, as well as some industrial uses. It would, of course, require a use permit. In terms of parking, as I'd mentioned, they're proposing parking within Building Two, twenty-eight spaces in there. And the parking street across the lot has about thirty-two spaces. In terms of parking requirement, the retail use triggers twenty-three parking spaces. The office space triggers seventeen parking spaces. And the bulk of it is, which is warehouse, which is about fifty thousand square foot of warehouse space, would trigger fifty-one parking spaces, which would total ninety-one. What they are proposing is, what they are proposing is fifty-one, which gives you a shortfall of thirty-one parking spaces. The rationale is that the bulk of the parking that has been triggered is for your warehouse use. And they do not anticipate, they don't expect too many employees to be using or manning the retail comm warehouse. The project was reviewed by Park Advisory District Committee as well as by our Development Coordinating DCC Committee. The Park Avenue District Committees had a couple of concerns regarding loading on the street as well as the entryway. These have been incorporated. The earlier entryway in here had ramps, which you can sort of see on the colored renderings. So the colored renderings in your package still has the old entryway with ramps. So the committee had a concern. So that has been revised, modified. And they have also created a loading port, which is interior. Earlier on, there was the loading port, which was here, which there was concern that the trucks would be sort of hanging out on the sidewalk. So that too has been addressed. In terms of staff comments, they've been indicated in the staff report there may be a need for soil remediation as the footprint of the building is not changing. The new stormwater regulations won't be applicable. And there was a little bit concerned regarding parking, particularly if the office space above is leased out to other general office spaces. However, this can be conditioned appropriately to ensure that the two are tied together. In terms of design, our main concern was with the signs. The Granite Expo sign that's been currently proposed is a basic, simple sign. I think it can be, we think it can be a little bit more attractive. This is an important building at an important intersection. So that may be, that could potentially be changed. Also, we are concerned about the banner, the proposed banner signs. I think I forgot to mention that these banner signs are going to be actually not signs, but it'll be like a sort of what we call, what they're going to be selling, different, you know, living style signs. If you go down Mandela Parkway, which where the existing Granite Expo is, you may, you can see the type of signs that they are, the banners that they're proposing similar to that. And we have a concern about that. Don't think it is appropriate or compatible with the surrounding buildings and the signage that you see there. The blank walls are a concern to us. And, but we think they can be modified. And the commission, of course, can give us what they think in terms of how that blank wall along Fortieth Street can perhaps be, these are the, where something else can be used. A suggestion was made regarding some kind of a mosaic of different building materials that they are going to be selling. So you have marble, granite, you know, glass. And you can make a mosaic out of it and have, you know, different, I mean, that's just a suggestion that was made. So with that, that's the end of my presentation. The staff would be looking for the commission to give direction on the variance, the signage, and the landscape improvements that have been suggested.
Thank you, Maru. Does the, is the applicant here? Do they wish to make a presentation?
Yes, both the architect and the owner, the future owners here, the operator of the business.
My name is Bill Coburn. I'm the project architect for the site. And I, and I wanted to emphasize that in this reconfiguration of these buildings, some design emphasis was placed in maintaining the historic character of the one-story building, which is going to be, which is the showroom building on Fortieth Street. It's a current, it's a brick building with actually a concrete block addition. So because it's part of the, given some designation to the historic designation as part of the Park Avenue Historic District there, we have proposed to sandblast the brick to make it more attractive. It's actually a very, basically a very attractive building, but it has paint color and overall deterioration of the building over the years does not show it off very well. So we're hoping the enlargement of the windows, creating of the showroom windows, the brick quality matching the context of the neighborhood there will significantly enhance its attractiveness. This building will also be substantially seismically upgraded in order to provide support for the roof and the brick walls. The other design components, which we felt are important here in addition to the enlarged windows to show off the product being sold here, would be the landscaped plaza, which we're creating to the west of the showroom building, where currently a driveway exists, a access driveway for loading into the existing one-story building exists. So trees, benches, planters, and unit block paving are proposed for that area. That is also an important space for basically connecting the retail space with the warehouse space behind with its interior parking and the outdoor parking area, which is on Horton Street, across the street. So we are hoping with the landscaping on the Horton Street lot, new landscaping along Fortieth Street in front of these two buildings, the warehouse building and the showroom building, that will create a stronger retailing and design emphasis along Fortieth, which is the main emphasis of our architectural design. In addition to the one-story showroom, which will include some new entryway on Fortieth Street, the enlarged window openings will be some overhangs, some overhangs at the window area there, which the owner in this packet had indicated would. Which the owner in this packet had indicated would like to be either glass or solar panels. Where he's emphasizing to us, he'd like to actually make them out of solar panels. We have a sample of that here, if you'd like to look at that. And then on the industrial building towards the west in the parking lot, as Maru had correctly stated. We are providing wainscoting there to try to provide some relief to the tall concrete walls there. Wainscoting of the granite material which is sold inside. And as she had also mentioned, we are proposing to put some large-scale, basically photographs up there of some of the products or some of the installations of the, of the company. And we're also proposing to paint that warehouse building on that facade and on the west side. The most prominent facade of that building in this context in order to give it more visual interest. So that in summary is what I can tell you about what the design import has been here as we have taken these warehouses and industrial buildings and converted them to more retail presence along Fortieth Street. So we recognize this as a study session. You're seeing this for the first time. We're here to get comments, suggestions, or take questions from you on any of these items which we've presented.
Thank you.
Is the retail cafe going to be served out of the catering kitchen?
Is the
Oh, excuse me.
We're in Granite Expo.
Wrong block. Sorry.
That's all right.
So the landscaping on the tilt-up along Holden. Looking at the footprint, it doesn't look like you've got much of any space along the sidewalk to
Oh, on the west side?
Yeah.
All right, so, and we, okay, so what we, we had indicated, I think, some lavender, rosemary along the base of the building. Some vines on some trellises which are mounted on the building there.
And a foot wide planting area?
Yes, yeah, very narrow planting, yeah.
And then your remaining sidewalk would be?
Those street trees.
How wide would that be?
Well, we'd be required to maintain a four-foot sidewalk. I think that's, I guess that's around 10 or 12 feet. I can't see it on this reduced plan here. And then apparently under separate contract with another property owner, there'll be street trees planted along that street.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the plaza, the entry plaza there, the planting area, and the bench arrangement that I'm looking on sheet A1. With replacement sycamores along the curb of 40th. Can you describe the plantings between the bench areas there, what your vision? It looks like what you're doing is separating that whole plaza area, creating a, you know, somewhat of a barrier between the sidewalk and that. It's continuous from planting and
I see. I guess our, first of all, the, I guess, as you probably know, the street, the sycamores, the street trees are are planned to be moved out to the curb. So this is, this is part of that overall gesture. I guess we felt that conceptually, the pedestrian traffic here would largely be moving from the showroom where there's an entry door to the west end of the showroom. Connecting to the parking lot as well as an exit door from the south side of the industrial building where the interior parking then exits out to this this long, narrow concourse, I guess. So we felt, or I think the impression was that there wouldn't necessarily be a significant number of people parking right at that curb there, walking directly in, although they're able to do that at the eastern end of that walkway where there are no benches or the western end. So we saw that as a, as a connecting spine between the parking lot, the interior parking, the warehouse, and the showroom. So I guess that's why the orientation was done in that manner. Rather than presenting this to the sidewalk itself and having people walk out to the sidewalk to go back in.
With the idea of shrub or hedge planting between each of the sets of vents?
I think we had, if I recall, there maybe was some photinia, maybe some lantana or, you know, some decorative planting there. Not so much a hedge, that's just decorative planting.
You've got, you've got formium and lantana.
Can you read that, huh? And there's
With my magnifying glass last night.
I'm using mine. And so the 40th frontage, there is parking along this strip? West of Hollis? Is that, I see parking stalls striped along the frontage to 40th. I thought there was no parking along there. Is, am I incorrect? I can't see out the window to see what's over there right now.
No, I'm pretty certain there is, right along there.
West of Hollis, on the north side of 40th.
West of Hollis.
West of Hollis, there is on-street, existing on-street parking along that stretch.
The taco truck.
Yeah, I don't think people typically park there because, you know, there's not much access to go there, to go to. But I don't think it's illegal.
But east of Hollis, there's no parking on the north side of 40th? At some point, there's a, it becomes a no-parking strip, doesn't it, with bicycle lane?
There is a bicycle lane on 40th Street, but there's also a parking lane.
On-street parking all the way up to San Pablo Avenue?
I think so.
I think so.
On 40th?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. There may be some There may be some places where it's restricted for various reasons, but generally speaking, there's a parking lane. Yeah, you don't see people parking there very often.
Somehow I just got the impression there was no on-street parking there.
Where insiders' outlet always park their truck.
Yes, that's true. I forgot. And can you explain your rationalization on the parking need? And the, what may be deficit, at least a difference between what the calculation is and what's being provided here?
Based on the discussions I've had with Jackie Lee, the owner of the ongoing business, which will, which will continue down at Mandela Parkway there. There are very few bodies in the warehouse space itself. And the 51 parking spaces which that triggered just didn't seem to match up with the reality of how he conducts his business. So therefore, we asked Maru for a stated parking count for, basically for that, that portion of the use.
So the business, the current business on Mandela will remain?
Yeah, that's my understanding. Will your current business on Mandela remain during, so this is like an ancillary?
And you actually have a second one further down in Oakland, around 23rd or something as well? And that will remain as well? That will close and effectively, that's the one that's moving here.
And another question was about circulation from the parking lot, the interior parking lot. You've got a couple doors that lead into the warehouse space, which is separate from the showroom area. Is, someone would have to leave the parking lot through the 40th Street doors and then go into the showroom and then back into the warehouse area if they were
Oh, they don't go into the ware, the, on the south side of, or the southeast corner of the interior parking lot. There's a ramp, a slight ramp that goes down to meet grade there, pair of double doors which exit out to the walkway. And then they would walk into the, into the showroom there. So they'd walk outside into the showroom. They wouldn't walk into the warehouse.
Then they would not go to the warehouse space?
Yeah, yeah.
And so these interior 28 spaces, those are public spaces or employee spaces or a combination of both?
They're public spaces. Or a combination of, I'd say.
Combination of.
And we haven't designated which ones would be employee spaces.
Okay. But at least some of them would be public access.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the idea is that the customers would come and park in the space inside the building. And then walk out the doors towards 40th Street through a landscaped area and into the showroom from that side door. And people approaching on the sidewalk, of course, would enter directly from the 40th Street side.
And would there be in that concourse area, what you call the spine. Since there would be customer access going out one door and then back into another, would there be either permanent or movable some kind of a canopy for inclement weather? Not that it ever rains in Calhoun.
It does, there's a dash line on the plan. You see that? It says canopy above. It's kind of small.
Okay, it's a little hard to read, but I see, I do see the dash line. Okay. Oh, I see it now, yeah.
Do you actually cut stone on this site or is it?
Excuse me?
Do you cut stone on this site?
Are you going to be cutting stone on the site? I think that, that's a different code matter, so I think it's just storage.
Just
Storage and sales, yeah.
So customers would have an opportunity to go in and see the various stones, like to sort of get a sense of what they want and then they make their selection?
Primarily in the showroom. Primarily in the showroom, yeah.
So they won't go in the warehouse, they'll just be in the showroom?
Occasionally, people will go in the warehouse. How would you describe that, Jackie?
Maybe we could get, since we're having a lot of comments, if you could come up and, so that the public can get to hear that and it'll be on, you know, going out over the air.
Can you state your name, please?
Jose Mora. And maybe his showroom.
And speak into the microphone, please.
It'll be the showroom where they'll view the items and they won't be in the warehouse walking around.
Okay. So I would imagine then in terms of the customers coming, I mean, they go in and they place their order, whatever they want. And they leave in their vehicle and it's, it's delivered to them from one of your other stores. So there isn't going to be any people pulling up and hauling their stone away, correct? I mean, it's just going there and you make your selection and there's, there's going to be no transport in and out of there for the customers. That's
Not for the customers, no. Their contractors have to, and we have the, what's grand?
Mandela.
Mandela Parkway where they'll be picking up the
Okay, so the contractors, they won't be coming in here and backing into the loading dock. They'll go to the showroom on Mandela.
Yes.
And that's where the fabric, any fabrication would be as well?
Any fabrication is down over there.
They'll go to warehouse.
Okay. So we won't have a lot of truck traffic going in and out there, picking up orders and
We do have a truck dock on the western side of this building with a loading dock. That's for moving the supplies and stuff. There will be some of that activity, but primarily the customers will go down to the warehouse on Mandela for most of those orders.
Okay.
There's a shift in there, but this, this will be a second shipment.
So what would be, what would, what do you store in this warehouse space? Do you store pre-cut pieces that if a customer says, I want a piece of granite, I like this one better than that one? Or do you, I mean, obviously if it's a warehouse, something's going on in there.
Yeah, we're storing ceramic tiles, which is almost the same.
Come a little closer to the microphone because this is going on.
Ceramic tile, that is, the sample is the same with the material. And solar panels that will be later on.
So this would be, would this be your primary warehouse for those particular materials?
For tiles, yeah, for tiles only.
So contractors that would be coming to use your products there, there would be some traffic in and out for that particular product, but not necessarily heavy loading?
We have the warehouse over there, so when we have orders, we'll ship them there.
So you deliver or they come and pick them up?
They come and pick them up.
So you'll store it on the 40th Street site, but when there's an order placed, you transport it over to the Mandela site for pickup?
Yes, most of all.
But not for tile?
No, that's for the tile.
For the tile.
Because that's what they store on the site, if I understand.
So you're storing it here but not delivering it to the purchaser?
Not, customers won't pick up at this location.
Well, why not?
Because of the traffic that we want to, we don't want too much traffic, people loading there. They say we, they want us to minimize that here.
But I mean, if the traffic's going to be there, whether it's the contractor picking up the tile or you picking up and delivering over to whatever other alternative site is, it's going to same, it's the same traffic.
Well, can I suggest that perhaps when this comes back to you at a public hearing with conditions and so forth, you might want to think about, and we staff will also be thinking about ways to address that issue, perhaps through conditions on hours of loading or routing or whatever.
Or location.
That was another thing we were thinking about. Delivering only, no, taking to the other warehouse only at a, no, one or two hours of the day. Not all day, running back and forth.
And presumably in that kind of a transport, you would be transporting multiple orders at a time. So there would be somewhat less traffic because if you're putting five orders on a truck versus five contractors coming and going separately.
Right. So they'd probably, it would reduce the truck trips, presumably. If you were transporting in larger trucks that could haul more than one load.
Yeah, we have a 60-foot
You could have a condition of approval on this that would say that individual contractors or customers couldn't pick up stuff here. But it would have to be, you know, shipped to the other warehouse.
So how many employees do you typically, do you expect to have in the warehouse?
In the warehouse, it's going to be between five and eight persons only. So that's why they were saying 51 spaces for them is too many. We only, it's going to be only, no, because it's going to be full crates that we're going to be moving in. So we don't need too many, you know, employees.
And when, when you're making that move from the warehouse to the truck, they'd come out with a forklift and back or drive the material into the back of a truck that had backed in to the loading dock off of Holden? Is that going to be your access or will the access be through the parking lot?
That'll be the access.
It won't be through the parking lot, it'll be in the
End of the microphone.
The loading dock on Holden Street on the west side of the building.
Okay.
And again, that's not going to be the contractors, it's going to be employees that are in this particular location that are transporting it to Mandela.
Right.
There's not a second floor plan shown, but there seem to be stairs going up.
Are you asking about the upper floor?
Yeah.
There's currently
An upper floor there for the current operator or owner of the warehouse. At the moment, we're just looking at that as ancillary office space for staff or management, I don't know. It's just really not very defined in our mind how that will be used.
We're inheriting that space.
Are you going to keep the little solarium that's on the second floor in there? Just out of curiosity. I've been in that building a few times. I used to have them as a customer.
It's up there, yeah, yeah.
Is it possible that that space would be subletted out to another office use with access off of Hollis?
That's not in this plan here.
Or it's not projected. Okay. Can you describe the signage issue a little bit more in these panels and how this is going to work with big mature sycamores along the 40th frontage?
How it's going to work with what?
How it's going to work with mature sycamores planted along the 40th frontage?
Well, sycamores are residuous.
Uh huh.
So at least part of the time you'll be able to see it.
What else can I say? Well, I've seen people go out and prune the tree up to improve visibility of the sign, so that's my concern.
You know, if you go down to Mandela, you'll see one of these on the outside of their existing facility. They've got some on the inside. You know, they're nice, they're nice photographs of interiors or exteriors. We, what we saw as designers, we saw a big two-story concrete building, you know. So we wanted to provide, the owner wanted to provide some opportunity for people to know what was inside. So he had access to these and we just felt it was a reasonable thing to propose as part of, of an element on the elevation there.
I would strongly encourage you to consider one of the staff's suggestions to maybe rather than show these types of photographs, to consider showing the product in some sort of a mosaic or, you know, some interesting display. I, I just don't think these photographs are going to cut it on 40th Street.
Yeah, to me, looking at them, they have too much, the look and feel, if you will, of a billboard. And I, you know, and I think we want to really get away from that. I remember a number of years ago, the discussion that we had about the rug center. And how the ones with advertise, with and how the ones with advertise, with, with words on them really didn't flow, but the ones that were just strictly pictures of the rugs themselves, that were effectively, you know, basically it looked like, you know, a pattern, an art form, that worked.
All right. So by analogy, would that work here? Would the photographs work if they were simply, like architectural quality photographs or interior quality photographs with no advertising or no word, or?
Like photographs of patterns of granite, you know, who knows? But, but I, I think, you know, if you're looking at a setup of a kitchen, or a setup of a dining room or a living room, you know, that, that has too much, these have, for me, too much to look and feel of a billboard.
So they're too much like a billboard, they're too commercial-looking, too much like advertising?
They're too busy-looking.
Too busy-looking, okay, all right. I want the words to communicate to everyone here that, so that.
I don't know, you know, I, I like the idea, because I think, and again, it's a sort of an element that you'd have to look at how you would attach pieces of granite and everything up there. But I like the idea of the texture and, and a little bit of definition and relief on, you know, these blank walls, as you'd identify.
It's, it's just the material itself, rather than a picture of how it's used.
That, you know, what, what comes to mind when, when, you know, saying a mosaic of, of the material, and it's not, it's not in any way that kind of material, but I actually, in San Leandro, I work across the street from a place that's a furniture studio, but in the redo of their building, they did what effectively is kind of like a mosaic or art form that's strictly bricks coming out from the wall, and, you know, and circular, and patterns, and things like that. And it formed what, what really looks like a mosaic relief, and is quite nice and quite aesthetically pleasing. You know, with the variety of colors and granite, I can imagine.
All right, so, so what you're saying then is that this user could, maybe should strongly consider a really dramatic use of granite on the walls there to advertise his granite business. And do it in such a way that it's aesthetic, it's aesthetic, not commercial and advertising-like or billboard-like, and, but can have an impact, a nice positive impact on the street. So it enhances people's memory.
It'll become public art.
Yeah, public art, okay.
I can, I can even see it being the type of material that you're talking about, but just not such a literal figurative kind of picture of somebody's kitchen. You know, you can do some really interesting large-scale prints of, of materials without having someone's kitchen.
Okay, well, he's a guy with the granite, so he's got plenty of material to work with. So let's see if we can pull out some design that works for you.
Just to clarify, are you speaking about, are we speaking about pictures of granite?
No, the real, the material.
Yeah, material.
Real stuff.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, I have to say.
You don't like that?
I think it would be more useful to have a sign that says what your business is at the southwest corner of the building, which you don't have any, you've got signage at the southeast corner, not southwest. If you're going to be doing granite treatment, I suggest that be done in the plaza area, the entrance, similar to what's done over at American Soil, where you go and you experience outside what is available and incorporated into your bench design and your landscaping. Having it up twenty feet on the side of the building, I'm not sure, especially hidden behind the trees.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, and I very much like the idea of doing it down where you can see it, where people can make a decision whether they like it or not. It becomes, I mean, these walls are humongous, so actually.
Yeah, you want some relief.
We want some relief, but maybe the application of the granite so far up is not the right thing.
Or maybe it's just paint, you know, there's something done with paint.
But, but the, the clear communication is that you don't want a billboard up there, yeah.
Right.
May I suggest that, you know, if you're concerned about identity, that you might take these Granite Expo signs, which are individual letters, and just put one at the upper, upper-left corner of the Fortieth Street elevation.
Yeah, I think that would be fun.
Yeah, okay. Well, that would also serve as his need, his business need to really tie those two buildings together, which we've chosen not to literally just make them all one color and look like they're just a monolithic thing. But articulate them a little bit, I think with a sign on both corners, that might help him clarify that the whole thing is what he's, is the place where he's trying to get people in.
And, and given that the walls on the Holden Street side are also big and blank, and that you will have visibility because there's a parking lot on the other corner, you'll be able to see that building coming up Fortieth Street for some time, maybe putting one on that facade as well.
I tell you, more signs on the building are an attractive option for him, so.
As long as they're tasteful.
We'll think about that.
Yeah, and tasteful, I think, is really an operative word. With all, with all due respect, the neon palm, or whatever it is on Mandela, every time I drive by there at night, it, you know, I'm glad that's in Oakland and not in Emeryville.
I think, I think that you have opportunities with your.
We're proud to have it in Oakland, by the way.
I think that you have opportunities with your little outdoor plaza space between the parking and the showroom door to do more with demonstrating the materials, but also to do more with planting. You could have another row of nice smaller trees there, or something that would also soften that side of the building. And you could put some evergreen, something larger. The planting that's shown here is pretty minimal and not very, not going to do a whole lot for the building.
I'd be happy to reflect on that, yeah. The intention is to make it a very, to make it a, a, a nice, a very positive connection between the three elements there. Somewhat, somewhat restful, whatever, but, but, you know, support the business, but be an attractive amenity to, instead of just having pavement there and having just an open sidewalk.
Maybe something that's a little more open, too, rather than creating a wall of benches and landscaping. Some additional opening there, you're given two options to get in and out of that, that corridor there. And people are going to be trying to move toward the, hopefully toward the crosswalk and getting there. They're going to be making a turn to the south to get through there.
That'd be fine, I'd be happy to take that into consideration as well.
But I do think it's nice to have some solid.
Separation.
Yeah, because it continues the street facade, and it provides, I think, some definition to continue the building and, and create that edge, so I wouldn't want to see it too open.
The question is whether we want to see the backs of benches along that row. That's what we're going to end up seeing, is the benches turned away from the sidewalk.
Well, it depends on what the benches look like. They might look nice.
I tell you, we'll come back with some neat benches.
Or conceivably some kind of landscaping that comes up and, you know, kind of behind the bench, like, like a shrub or something that would hide the back end of the bench from the street side.
Or they could be two-sided, you know, just a bench that doesn't have a back.
That's what I was thinking, something in granite, or, you know, something like that would be nice.
I think, I'd also encourage you to look at reinstituting the treatment that wraps around to the Holden Street side with the facade that, that's on the colored drawing that, I don't, it looked like it was some granite facing or some tile facing that was going to wrap around, but it seems to have gone away in the plans that we have.
Okay, we could consider that, mm-hmm, yeah.
I mean, just something to break up that long, big, flat.
And also, it's, in reality, buildings are seen in perspective, rather than just seen straight on. So, so when you do that, it tends to unify the complex more. Is that supportable?
The Wayne Scott?
Yeah, the Wayne Scott.
Could be another sample of your product.
I, I guess we didn't get Jim's other question answered, which was a little more clarification on the glass and solar panels. What were you envisioning there?
All right. I believe there's a sketch in your packet.
Sheet A4.
Which is on sheet A4, which, on the upper right-hand side, diagram's basically an over, the over, the overhang concept there. And then, so we, they would like to use a solar panel for that. We've got a sample of one here, relatively thin, be mounted on a metal substructure there with the brackets like that. So they'd like to use those at the, at the, over the new openings for, in the showroom, and along the, the industrial building on the west side at the concourse there, the walkway. So these would be. Mounted on a substructure with brackets, that's the building, it's pretty optimal.
Over each of the windows?
Yes. It's just above the window. Oh, it is a canopy.
And these would actually be functional, and they would generate electricity?
Yes, yes, yeah.
And would that be, kind of go back into the grid, or would it help power your building, or kind of probably a little both?
Well, I'm not sure I can answer that right now, but anyway, they'll be, they would be functional. And whether they'll be enough to push some electricity back to PG&E, I don't, can't answer that now, but. They intend to make it functional and, basically, make them work.
Could you come to the microphone?
All right, he's the expert.
And your name?
Please identify yourself.
My name is Mike Allen, and I'm a solar power consultant. And to address your question, tying it back into the grid, that is most likely what we would be doing. It will, it'll, it'll power just a very small amount. We're not talking a, a large amount of panels here, most likely under five kilowatts worth of, worth, in an entire system. This size building would most likely need something around two to four hundred kilowatts to power that, that size building. Most likely even more than that, so a five-kilowatt system is very minor.
Yeah.
So, and the functionality of these, of this system, since we're not going to be facing directly in the direction and the orientation where we need to, it, the functionality of these panels is going to be quite low. But it's going to be more of a display purpose, but it will be, it will definitely function to produce electricity.
So is there a plan to, to sell the solar panels then, as well? That'll be another product line?
Okay, and actually, I mean, as long as you've got on, you know, the Clearcom building is a very large building with presumably a, a flat roof, they would be out of sight, but as long as you're doing solar hookups, you know, why not do solar on, on the roof of the Clearcom building as well, and just add a little bit more back into the grid?
That, that would, ultimately, that would be ideal. But as of right now, we're, we're mainly discussing just the awning system, so I don't know if I, I can't really answer that question, because I'm not the one dealing with the financing of the situation.
And so you don't see a problem with large sycamores umbrellling over this system?
Well, yes, it definitely, that's why I did mention the fact that the functionality of these panels is going to be quite minor.
Right. I guess in the winter time, you're going to have some light getting in there.
Yes, and it depends on which, which section of the, of the building these are going to be focused on.
So you're basically displaying a product you're selling?
Yes.
That's the purpose, I mean.
Any other questions?
One thing I might point out, I'm not sure if this has been mentioned yet or not, the street trees along Fortieth Street, all the way from Hollis to Holden, and then across the frontage of the parking lot on the other side of Holden, are being relocated. The current, the trees currently are away from the street, they're adjacent to the property line edge, they're on the inside side of the sidewalk, they will be moving them to the outside side of the sidewalk. And that's similar to the treatment at the Age Song project further down. So the street trees will be against, you know, next to the street, all the way from Horton to Hollis Street with these two projects.
And ultimately, the plan is to do that along the entire length of Hollis?
Eventually, that's a policy that the Park Avenue District Advisory Committee has recommended. I would note that that's also being done at the Oakwalk project between Adeline and San Pablo, but that's not in the Park Avenue district.
We have an Oakwalk project?
Far as I know.
So these, these awnings would extend into the public right-of-way?
They might, I, that's not a big concern to us.
I think they would, actually, because I think the, I think the building's at the property line there on the south side.
We may need to get an encroachment permit. Get them to the airspace.
Does that mean we get the electricity?
We've got them on the, on the east side as well, so that would be the case there.
And your, your landscape plan envisions at least a narrow strip along the south side of the brick building?
That's right, again, we've got some small.
Right.
Planting along the base of the Fortieth Street there.
That's in the public right-of-way, though.
Hmm?
That little landscape strip is in the public right-of-way?
Right.
Yes, yeah.
And staff, you had a, a concern about the proposed signage on the brick building? That it wasn't, was that the signage that we see in the black and white sheets? Which actually is similar to, in size and character, to the existing signage, the old signage on the building. And your concern was that it's just not fancy enough, or?
Basically, it's pretty plain, I mean, you know, if they're going to be, it's just, one can live with it, but, you know.
No, I'm saying, it doesn't bother me, especially on a brick building.
It's understated, I think.
Yeah, I was kind of surprised, that's why I was suggesting other signage to make the building a little more.
Put some palm trees up there.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
I take it your customers come because they know where you are, you're not dragging people off the street to this kind of facility?
Right.
Well, there's, I mean, the, the business owners want to know that this is Granite Expo, he wants it clear. So, I mean, the sign is, has some importance here, but.
And what was the material that the signage is made of?
I think we've just got red, those kind of conventional red letters, plastic letters.
Plastic or whatever, something.
Are they internally illuminated?
Did we have illuminated ones? He wanted illuminated ones, yeah, illuminated ones.
Oh, as long as it's tasteful.
Yeah, I was going to say, I was still thinking some nice metal kind of.
The entire letter, letter lights up? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, that's different than what I was thinking.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking it'd be some nice metal or something, you know.
It looked more subtle than that.
You wanted, you want individual, like pinned-out letters that are indirectly.
That's what they are, no, they're individual letters, yeah, it's not a big signboard.
I don't think I'd want them lit from, in, internally and glowing out. I think I'd probably rather want light flooding onto the wall.
Okay, all right, that's good directions, okay, all right, fine.
Are we going to ask if anyone else here wants to comment on this project? Not that I think there is anyone.
I don't think there is, but I will officially do that. Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions on the project? This isn't a public hearing, it's just their comments. Okay, we didn't see any here, I think the commission has asked plenty.
And I think we've talked about this enough.
I agree.
All right, thank, well, you've covered a lot, thank you so much.
Have we provided you with?
Yeah, he's given some good guidance over everything here, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, our final study session this evening is the Paula Duke Fine Catering Edition located at 1350 Park Avenue.
This is the one with the. He's the only one left.
This one having no parking is kind of scary. This one has no parking.
Okay, this.
Okay, this is a property located kitty corner from where we are sitting today, Paula Duke. It's a seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five square foot parcel and it has an existing two-story building, which is about forty-eight hundred square feet in size. The, of the current operation of the business, it's a catering business, and what they do on the first level is food preparation, there's the big kitchen area, and then on the second, it's offices. What they're proposing is, in addition to the existing building, which is right here, right now, there are four parking spaces there that are being used by the facility.
There are four parking spaces there?
Four, yes. Yep, four parking.
More cars cram in there, but there's four striped places, or, or it's striped at one time.
So what they're proposing is a four-story addition. At the ground level, it'll have a retail cafe, it's primarily cafe, and it'll be a cafe that would also be operated by the current operators of the catering business. At the second level, we'll augment the offices to the existing offices, it's about nine hundred and twenty square feet of office space, and on the level of, a level above that, it's another eight hundred and seventy square feet of office space. They're apparently doing very well and they need, they want to expand, and that's why the additional office spaces. On the top level, we have an eight hundred and forty-five single dwelling unit. This is located in the IL zoning district of, of the city, where retail and cafes allowed by law, offices need a use permit, and, uh, single-family houses are not allowed, either by law or by conditional, or by conditional use permit. Typically, in an IL or industrial, industrial zoning districts, there is a provision for caretakers' units, which is not uncommon in a lot of zoning ordinances. We unfortunately don't have such a provision. And we believe, and the reason that they're proposing this dwelling unit is for the owners and operators of the business to relocate from their existing residence in San Francisco and live on, on the site. It is, it would be possible, and we would want to, if we were to approve this project, to condition the occupancy of the dwelling unit with the operators of the business on the floors below.
Would that then redefine it sort of as a live-work?
Uh, we would consider it to be accessory to the main use, which would be, you know, whatever that goes in the retail or office. In terms of building intensity, which would be applicable here since it's a non-residential building, it falls in the zero point seven FAR zoning district. The existing FAR is zero point eight nine, which is non-conforming, and the proposed addition would push it to one point two five, which doesn't conform with the existing FAR. However, as you may recall, the draft Park Avenue District Plan calls for increasing the floor area in this ratio to one point four, and therefore, the proposed density would comply with the Park Avenue District Plan when it gets approved. So if the application is processed prior to the adoption and implementation of the Park Avenue District Plan, then the project would be fine in terms of FAR, and if it's processed before it, then it would need adjournment plan amendment for building intensity very similar to the Age Song, which you guys approved last month. In terms of building height, it's going to be forty-eight feet and eight inches, which is permitted in this district with a conditional use permit. Conditional use permit allows it to go till fifty-five, fifty-five feet. In terms of parking, it would need to provide parking for the proposed addition, as well as replace the parking, for parking spaces, which it's going to be displacing. Just to remind you, and it'll get mentioned by the applicant, the, the business also has a, a twelve parking spaces off-site on Holden Street. These were considered to be existing and therefore meeting the needs of what the existing business is, and therefore not counted, are not counted in terms of what the new addition would require. So the new addition requirement would be the space, we would be considering both the dwelling unit, as well as cafes accessory uses, and the office use would trigger four parking spaces, and when you add the four parking spaces in the front, which are going to be displaced or removed, the total parking requirement would be eight. They are also providing bicycle spaces, which can be used towards their parking provision. They're proposing six bicycle parking spaces here, so their total requirement would then be, they'll be short of seven parking spaces for which they would need a variance. In terms of variances, our zoning code allows two options. One is when sta, if the standard variant, standard findings for variance cannot be made, then it allows for in-lu parking fee. And that in-lu park, parking fee amounts to, by our code, seventy, seventy-three hundred dollars per space, and that calculates to about fifty-one thousand dollars that they would, that would be, what would be the in-lu parking fees for this project, if, if the standard parking findings cannot be made. In terms of design, you know, what's been proposed right now, it seems.
There are no additional spaces available at the Holden Street lot that they currently?
Uh, there, it's.
They've explored that option?
Right, yes, I believe they have, and.
They're not available.
They, well, they don't own that property either.
And they don't own that.
And that's owned by Roger Bash, and he's not willing to give them parking in perpetuity, which is what they would need in order to avoid a variance. They would need the parking to be available as long as this use is there. Otherwise, they need a variance. And Roger doesn't want to foreclose his options to develop that property at some time, or use that parking to, for some other use.
Okay.
Well, this is an area where parking is very scarce to begin with.
This project was reviewed by DCC as well. In general, in terms of design, it looked, we thought that what, what we, what we are being shown here seemed fine. The only comment that was made was regarding the windows and the fact that it would need to also comply with the Park Avenue Design Guidelines, and was suggested that the windows be divided or multi-pane to meet that. We also felt that perhaps when they do apply, make formal application, axonometric perspectives we also provided to better assess how tall this building is going to look, because it is two stories higher than what's right, right there. But as such, there were no other comments that were made, and in terms of what we are seeking from the commission is to provide direction regarding both design and the parking variance.
Thanks, Maria. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation?
Absolutely.
Good evening, Sudesh Mohinzu, I'm a principal with SCFM Design Studio. Let's see, are you all able to see this now?
Yeah.
Okay. This is a, this is a challenging project. I don't think it would ever make economic sense if somebody were to do this as a, as a development. It's, it's very idiosyncratic in terms of cost per square foot for such a small, narrow building. But I just want to give you a quick history. When, when we started working with them, we explored options that were other than a new building, perhaps, perhaps adding space on top of the existing building, or, or some combination, and, or even within the building. But I think very quickly we all realized that, well, two things, I, I have always felt that this intersection needs, well, let me put it this way, the, the City Hall seems to be the only anchor here, and there are the three other corners that's just, are significantly timid, if I can say. And so it, it needed something, so we first, we looked at doing, adding to the facade, the south-facing facade of the building, behind the parking spaces. And the more we did that, well, the more we got into it, realized, we realized that this is a tilt-up concrete building, by the way. And so the openings are, and the floor-to-floor height are very much designed for a specific kind of use that was originally in this building. The, the current owners moved in about sixteen years ago. So it has a very sort of bunker-like quality to it. And so, very quickly, we realized that in order to make it cost-effective, that it would be better to bring the building up to the street edge on, along Park Avenue, forego that sort of large field of parking space that's there with a huge curb cut, with four spaces climbing up past the sidewalk. And, and then we would free ourselves from trying to somehow decorate the old building. And so what we, what we started looking at was really how to bring, this is the existing setup. So here we have this whole thing that doesn't sort of lend itself to what Park Avenue wants to be. The building actually is even further set back from its neighbors, that kind of jog back and forth. And, and essentially, the.
Over here.
I'm sorry.
Over here. The commissioners can't see your laser pointer on their screens. Is it possible to use the cursor on your computer to point?
You can use the free mic.
Let me see how good I can. I don't know if I can.
Either that, or the commissioners can turn around and look at the wall.
Should I just describe to you, it's not that complicated, I can, I can perhaps.
You can turn around, you have a hand mic to your right, down below there too, if you want to use the hand mic.
But they, you can continue to do what you're doing, they'll just have to turn around.
All right, all right. So what, the, the current building does have a second floor, and that is up here. And the, the floor-to-floor height, however, is, is, on the ground floor, is, is really not enough to make for a nice street use. That was our other objective, is to somehow have active street use. So hence, the, the direction was to really explore, what can we do in this area here? Which would essentially be a new building, which would sort of present a whole new sort of urban scape and facade along Park Avenue, as well as a small portion along Hollis. So this kind of gives you an overall picture of what's there right now. And that is across from us. The, the City Hall obviously dominates the surrounding, and I think we've been aware of that in our development of the exterior facade too. So what we have is a new building that's being proposed in this area, right here. The facade of the existing building that follows my pointer, that is being also modified so that there is a, a more pleasing transition between this volume, that's pretty much staying the way it is, which is further set back, than this one, and then finally, the new building. There's a minor, I want to mention that there, there is a trash area right now that doesn't look very good, doesn't present itself very well to Hollis Street, so we definitely want to change that. The, the ground floor of the new building is actually set back so that these three volumes will read distinctly, which I think Staff's suggestion of axonometric is absolutely well-taken, because that'll show the juxtaposition of these three volumes. But in any case, the entrance to the, this building will be, will be, will still remain here, that's where the current entrance is. The new building will set back here with a retail cafe space that domini, will dominate with outdoor seating along Park Avenue. The western side, this will be, this will act as a second exit from the office spaces, and also as entrance to the residential unit. The, the second floor is here, is office use, third floor is also office use. I may want, I want to add that the, we felt it was really important that the retail space looked like a good retail space. So the, the second floor of the addition is actually higher than the second floor that is currently existing. So there's stairs that go up, and that's how you get this building that has a substantial street presence. And then finally, the top floor, maybe hard for you to see, but I think you have that in your package. The, the upper floor, which, which to us is a very exciting sort of element, that crowns the building, it, it has a very, the, the whole building has a very simple geometric treatment, a very classic kind of treatment, but rendered in a contemporary way. So we have continuous set of windows all around, on all four sides. We have laid out the interior in such a way that there are no walls that are coming off, so you'll have a continuous sort of loft, like a penthouse-like feeling. The only enclosed space, well, there are two enclosed spaces, but the truly enclosed space, the bathroom is in the middle of the unit. So you come up here, which is toward, from the western side, the living, dining, kitchen space here, and then you have these sort of ho, two hallways that'll allow you to move from the more public side of the residence to more private side here, and laundry and storage facilities all around. But the key was to get this working completely, including a, a second exit that will also be, that's also sized so that it fits the rhythm of these windows, which will take you out here, down to the roof of the existing building. From there, we'll, we'll be modifying the, the stair that currently exists in the existing building towards Hollis Street to pick up this, this path of travel. The, the section, as you can see, is here, the retail floor is higher than this, and then of course, we have the second floors, and here's the stair coming down. We really feel that the, the building scale, and here is the transition that I was talking about from the existing kind of very utilitarian warehouse-like impression that we currently have to a new facade here, which with a raised parapet, that'll also allow for us to conceal the stair coming down. So we're raising this here, and finally, to the, to the new building. And here is the new building from Park, Park Avenue side. The, finally, I just wanted to show you that some of the, it's kind of hard to tell, but if you can, the facade of the City Hall that faces west has windows and walls that are somewhat, that, that's what we have referenced in our building, the sort of very simple expression of substantial-looking classic building that has deep windows, and some of that are actually, even in a sort of bizarre way, they are, they're even expressed in the present building. And then of course, some other examples of buildings nearby that have a similar expression. I think I'll be happy to answer any questions. Might have?
The first one that, that has come to my mind in, in looking at all of this, for that, the new building on Park, it, I think the staff report says forty-eight and change, or something like that. By way of reference, and especially since it's going to be on opposite corners, does anyone know how tall building we're in now, City Hall, Old Town Hall extends up?
I, I can answer that.
Okay.
We did do, and I, I did not bring it in my presentation, we did do a comparison, the City Hall, the top of the City Hall dome is, is higher, is close to fifty-three feet.
About fifty-three?
And.
Because I don't want to see something tower. Because I don't want to see something towering over City Hall.
Yes, yes.
Brick walls of this, of this structure are-
They are lower, however, in our facade, too, I, I think that you're not going to be aware, this is a very shallow sort of roof that we have in the building. So, from the street, we have a similar expression where we have, this will primarily read like a three-story building with a, a cap, a capping element at the top. And so, you will read this as a sort of first cornice line, and then, the second one is here. Even the second one is forty, forty-three feet, six inches. And we'll be happy to, when we come back to you, we will, we could draw a cross-section, actually, a true cross-section diagonally across, showing the relative height of the City Hall. City Hall also sits a little higher, just, you know, eighteen inches higher or so, because the grade works. So, we'll show you the actual elevations.
What type of colors and materials are you thinking of at this point?
The, at this point, we're thinking that the, the building is going to be stucco, a very smooth stucco, and we haven't really gotten into the colors yet, so I don't want to sort of say something off the top of my head, but we will be mindful of, of course, what, what City Hall looks like, and, and the windows are, we are thinking, the window's going to be deep-set, but with, where our current thinking is to have hardwood surrounding the windows, so they'll be very solid, so the stucco would actually not go back, but the wood frame would, would come out just slightly, so there'll be a very, sort of rich material along here. And we haven't quite, most likely, there are some, some sort of a metal roof, or something that is, so we're not quite sure about the materials at the top, but the, the treatment is really going to rely on, heavily on, on the good quality of the windows, and a very crisp detailing and, and depths for the stucco. The street level is going to have a more pedestrian-friendly, will have fabric awnings that, that come out to shade the areas, there'll, of course, be some umbrellas and so on. And the storefronts are also going to be done with actual wood storefronts. So, so, we're not contemplating aluminum storefronts here, for example.
No elevator?
There's, there's no elevator proposed in the building.
That's going to be a long flight, if you've been working hard all day to go upstairs.
Well, Jim is here. Well, it's a lot better than right now, they drive to San Francisco.
Yeah.
And with the bridge, I could tell you, with all that construction going on, I, I work in San Francisco, it's getting bad. Two o'clock in the afternoon, I have meetings in Emeryville, and the rush hour starts at one o'clock in the afternoon, it's, it's-
The, the retail, is that going to be primarily just like for breakfast and lunch, or, or just a lunch trade? I understand it's going to be more sort of casual fare.
Jim Laduke, yes. It's not, the concept isn't fully thought out, but it would definitely be more casual.
Would it include dinner?
Good question. That's part of the concept that's not thought out.
Will it be served out of the catering kitchen?
The food will be prepared in the kitchen.
And there's no restroom shown.
The, we have done a calculation, we've, we met with the building officials to, to make modifications to the existing restroom, so it would meet the count of the total. So, the restroom is the restroom, and, and of course, the exit that goes from the roof, so there are a few things that are being shared by the building.
So, the, the existing restroom in the existing office space would be modified?
Modified, to, to, to take into account the additional square footage. Because we're not proposing any restrooms for the office floors either. So, they're all, all going to be seen as a totality. In fact, there will be area separation between-
So, it'd be public and private use?
Yes.
I mean, for employees and resident, employees, and then for patrons of the café.
Right.
And how would they access from the café to the, I see the restrooms there interior to the office, that looks like it's quite a ways down the corridor. Would they have to go out of the building, and then down through the existing entrance?
No, it would not be out of the building, I think, we-
We're going to sheet four of your color scheme there. I assume the, the restrooms are the twin smaller rooms there in the center of the building?
There's sheet, uh-
Four.
Sheet four.
Yes, the restrooms are currently up close-
To the stair, the entry stair, that's towards Hollis Street.
So, you'd probably have to punch another hole.
We'll have to punch another hole, most likely, so that they can go, get back.
And you have an elevation difference between the kitchen and the retail, or the café, and that means that carts and things like that would have difficulties too, I would guess. And you'd have to have a handicap ramp to get up to the restroom, and-
Right, there is an existing stair. We, those are all things we definitely need to work out.
And are you envisioning liquor as part of this? What I'm wondering is whether we're going to have to separate, or eventually separate out the street seating, if in fact, you serve wine or liquor. I think we've got to separate out the table space on the sidewalk, and I just want to make sure that's all going to fit with the sidewalk design.
Well, we'd certainly like to do at least beer and wine.
Right.
Yeah, that would be nice.
And would prefer to also have a full liquor license, because we, we do all beverages as part of our catering operation, so that license then would serve for the catering operation.
And so, the, the remaining-
Grab some nice glass wine by the glass? We don't have anything down in that part of town that offers that.
Well, we wouldn't want to appear to be trying to influence the, the commission, but we are, we are right next door.
But you think, your senses will have a remaining area of, I don't know what this, what are these two-foot squares in the sidewalk that are shown here?
Get my skin out.
I believe that with, this project has been underway with all the planning for Park Avenue, and, and because I, I talked to Charlie about this, and I, I think we're okay with-
It'll fit.
It'll fit.
Yeah, it will fit. Now, now, it may also be that as we develop this, and if they definitely want to do that, there is a option that we've thought about exploring, which is that the, the windows that are, the storefront windows that are west of the entry doors, they could also be made in such a way that they are operable, so, so that you really could have tables that, that were almost half-in, half-out, very much like, if any, any of you have been to Caesar on Shattuck Avenue in, in Berkeley, next to Shepenees, where there's just a little, tiny little outdoor space, and people just, if three people are sitting, two people are sitting actually outside, one is sitting inside.
Right. It's just, it's got to be controlled, you got to design-
Right, right, we have to control, just like they have, which is a nice rail.
I just want to make sure it'll fit. And it looks like you're, you intend to do the option of having the graded tree wells, so that you can have, along the Park Avenue frontage-
That's right, so they'll allow more, more pedestrian width.
Right. And so, is there any, other than the street trees, you've got, right now, where the ramp is proposed, that's the only green space you have around the entire property, which is going to turn into a concrete ramp. What is your vision for some kind of greening around the edge of the building? Are you talking, thinking about pot, potted plants, or?
Potted plants, and, and also, we would like to actually explore, I'm, I'm a big fan of vertical landscaping, so, since we're doing all this effort to have places where we could grow vines from very small pockets along Hollis Street.
And in front of the trash container.
And certainly in front of the trash container.
And I'm glad to see the trash container is enlarged in size.
Yes.
And screened.
It'll be completely screened.
It used to be bigger than that.
Yeah, you're busy, obviously.
We, we also plan to, I don't know if our drawings show that, but we also plan to have a nice sort of a signature, very elegant, very understated canopy, on, on top of the, the current and the future entrance to the catering business, which is in that, right above the ramp. So, it could be one of the, it could be a glass, steel and glass canopy.
Do you, to get around the existing transformer, do you need that space between the transformer and the barrier, or could that be masked with some landscaping there? It looks like there's room to get around it, and still green up that, that little area there on the corner of the building, maybe even with some of the vertical stuff that you're talking about.
Well, let's see, are you talking about, let me see?
No, on the, to the south, on the other side of the parking area, keep going south there, right there. Oh, keep going south, south, south there.
Sheet two.
Transformer. Transformer, and you've got barriers to keep people from driving into it.
Right.
Those are the bollards.
Right. So, is it possible to green up that area there? I don't know what you can, are allowed next to a transformer.
Well, we can look, I think, I, I, I think-
What I'm wondering is if there's an adequate space, and whether right now, you use that space between the bollards and the transformer to get to the sidewalk. I assume you go through the paved.
No, no, they don't use that space. I, I think we would, we would, we would have no problem doing it, as long as PG&E allowed us to do it. So, we'll have to see on this side. I know that we've done transformers in parking lots where we have hedges, and sometimes, they can be real strictlers about having space all around, but other times, maybe it depends on the transformer. If, if some side is blank, they, they wouldn't mind having landscaping, as long as it's maintained, and, and it's not the side that they need access to.
For the panel open.
Yeah, but certainly along, where we say facade renovation, that, that facade, I think, would be something that we would definitely want to have, you know, creeping fig or something that would just cling to the wall.
Yeah, and maybe-
But we def, I, I, I'm definitely taking note of the fact that I think that is something that we can look at more with the, with the magnifying lens on this plan, where we can squeeze in landscape areas.
Even maybe on the west side of the ramp, at the foot of the building there.
Right, right there, yes.
Set back to the door, you got room there. But I think, I think it looks great. I think it's great that you intend to live there, I think it's great that you, you know, you want to improve the activity at this corner.
And we're defining, as we've pointed out in many occasions, this is a gateway intersection for the city, and we need to define it.
I don't, I don't have a problem with the parking issue, if the staff is, is comfortable with that solution, and obviously, you're comfortable with it.
I, I do want to add just one thing, which is a little bit of a plus, however you, you count it, even though it's not on private property, since we are getting rid of the four parking spaces, you, you actually get two parallel spaces back on Park Avenue, which are public spaces, so there is some gain there.
That's a good point, thank you for bringing that up.
Well, there's a caveat to that, though. I think we may not permit parking there, because of the need to maintain the turning radius for the big semi trucks.
Oh, yeah.
So, I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure if there will or will not be, or how many spaces there will be there.
At least one, maybe.
Because the curb's moving out.
I think the one thing that's kind of surprises me, the residential use doesn't, there's not even a hint of residential use, which is fine, that's your design, but, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to a roof deck on the back of the thing, some, I'm just surprised you don't have any exterior-
Exterior space.
Side of the building, or-
I don't think there's enough area to do it.
Not within the footprint, but they could certainly extend something beyond the building.
Well, they could walk down two floors to a roof.
Right, it's going to be visible from the north side that way, so it sort of maintains the architectural integrity to not have-
Yeah, exactly.
But on, on the roof, I mean, because they have the stairway going down.
On the existing roof.
On, it could be on the existing roof, if they wanted to do that. But I think I agree with, with the commissioner, Gail, that the, the, we have, we have to be careful in how we design the stair, we do not want it to look like it was sort of tacked on as afterthought, so we want it to keep it kind of-
Or look like a fire escape.
Or look like a fire escape, right. So, I think in that, and, and, and I think that there, you know, we, we toyed with the idea of having a small balcony-like space, but I, it, it just felt that if we have some operable windows, which of course we'll have, that the entire unit has that feel of being out in the open, because you'll be able to look on all four sides. And, and the space, it's a very small unit, and the space was so critical to them.
I think any decks or anything in this particular case, with this design, would really detract from the design and that image you're trying to create. I mean, to me, this just seems very urbane, and-
Right, very tight, it's-
And I, I think it's a really cool concept, I like it.
Is that a skylight over the kitchen?
Yes, there will be a skylight over the bathroom.
Oh, it looks like there's one in the kitchen. There's some, a dotted line on, just next to the sink?
Yes, over the kitchen, I'm not sure if we need it, but certainly-
Certainly in the, in the bathroom, we will.
What does that line mean, then?
Are you looking at page seven?
Yep. Next, just to the right side of the sink?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I think-
I think it shows up in one of the other plans, too.
I mean, that would be masked by the roof treatment, anyway.
Yes, you want to see it.
It looks like it's on the back side.
On the back side, that's-
There's probably a layer that, uh-
Showing a skylight.
But I'm, I'm surprised it's not showing in the bathroom, so if, we will definitely have it in the bathroom. We might have an additional one in the kitchen area. Though I'm not really sure if you need it, because it's such a narrow unit with light from both sides, I don't think you need it in the kitchen area, frankly. And to keep the classicism of the, the room, it's better not to have something that is asymmetrical.
Do you, what is the long-range Pixar plan for that corner? What's the height of the building that's planned for that eventually? Do we know?
We were just talking about that. I don't recall the exact height that would have been, well, under the currently approved Pixar master plan, that would be the phase-two building, that's, that is to say, the next building to be built. It's two stories, but they're very high floors, I would guess maybe thirty feet, thirty to forty feet?
It has a full basement, too.
Forty?
Maybe forty?
Forty-ish, may, maybe forty feet. Brick with big square windows, very, very large, kind of oversized square windows, but designed to kind of mimic the older brick buildings on Park Avenue, just at a bigger scale.
It'll overpower everything.
With the gate in France.
Yeah.
With the fence in France, which is-
You mean the fence.
The big fence.
It's that some reason, you don't consider an elevator for floors.
I think space would be the, the main, it, it's such a, this whole building, it's, it's like designing a mini car, it's, we're trying to fit everything in it, and including, of course, there, the, what started this whole thing, which was to give them additional office space. And then, the retail and the residential came afterwards, so the office space on the second and third floor is, is what they started this process for, and the retail space became something that we felt was a wonderful opportunity on the street, in the street corner, and then the residential came next, as saying, we actually came to just, you know, if you're interested in knowing, we, we first did a three-story building, and it just didn't seem to have a retail base that is tall, that clearly says retail, and then have one floor of the, or two floors above, there wasn't an ending to the building, and, and having a three-story is always a tricky building to do. With the, with the four stories, we have the retail on the ground floor, that's a distinct sort of podium to the building, then we have two floors of offices, and then we have this sort of delicate cap on top for the residential. But all that puts a lot of pressure on stairs and everything else, so it's, it's, it's a very small footprint for, even for the office floor, to have an elevator which would really then eat into that space.
Yeah, because you would still have to have stairs, no matter what.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Also, an elevator would, I would presume, would require an elevator penthouse with the mechanical equipment on top of it, which would affect the, the design of the building.
And increase the height.
Well, you're still going to have to probably- Well, you're still going to have to probably block off the stairway in the penthouse because you show no doors for the penthouse, even on the floor below.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I remember that. Maybe it came up somewhere.
Actually, we have... if you turn to page six, the... on page six, where the showing the... it's the third floor of the office and the roof of the existing building. If you follow the line of... let me show this here. If you follow the line of the stair coming down...
No, no, I'm talking about the main stairway.
Oh, the main stairway.
As it comes up to the penthouse, there's no door. It doesn't...
Oh, yes, that's because we tend to not have a door.
But there's no way to get any privacy in the penthouse.
No, no, there is because the way we're designing it is that... we've actually had a long discussion with the building department on that and they finally, I think, were convinced. The stair does not have a door at the top. The stair is going to be part of the unit. So you will enter the penthouse unit on the third floor. That's where the door is. So it's very much...
It doesn't show it on the plan.
Well, if we don't show it on the third floor, then it's an oversight, but...
Yeah, it's there on the third floor.
Sheet five.
Well, it's right here. First floor is sheet six.
Sheet six. The reason it's not shown, I see what you're saying, on sheet six, is because the up arrow... the door is going to be mid-landing.
Oh, okay, fair enough.
So halfway up, there'll be a door. We thought it'll be kind of nice because we didn't want to have a door at top interrupting.
It's right next to the word "up."
No, that's a door that's going into the office spaces, though. It's not going into the...
No, if you see...
That's going into the office, not the...
Yeah, if you see sheet six, if you look at the stair, there is, as you come out...
That diagonal?
Yeah, that diagonal line sort of means it's a break in the stair.
Right. So it's going to go... the door's going to be there within that landing?
Which there'll be a door at the mid-landing. So you come out of the third floor, let's say when Jim gets tired. He comes out of the third floor, he makes a left, goes half a flight of steps, and that's where the door to his residence will be.
Then your stair plan isn't drawn right because you bump your head on the ceiling.
Well, yeah, it may not be drawn right, but that's our intent. That's our intent. And the building department had a question on that, too, because they felt that you cannot have a... the stair has to be separate as an exit system. But then we convinced them that the stair actually stops at that point and the residence begins. Very much like if you had a walk-up townhouse, like when you walk from the street in San Francisco, you see a lot of them, which is right next to the retail space, there's a house above. Your entrance is on the street level and there's no stair... there's no door at the top of the flight. And that stair is considered part of the occupancy of the upper floor. So we're going to work that out, but that's our intention. And if for any reason, code reason, we cannot work it out, then we will have to have a door at the top. But we want to leave it so that if you're in the kitchen or the dining or the living, there's no door. You can see west.
Oh, it's very nice, but it frankly doesn't work what you've tried.
Well, we try to make it work.
Yeah. The fire department is the one that's going to call the shots.
Right, fire department, yes.
Any more comments at this time?
I have a question for the commission. Are you satisfied with using the in-lu fee as a way to address the parking shortfall?
I think it's a major mistake. I think you getting... not having onsite parking is going to be particularly a problem for the cafe. And I guess your employees can park in that for-rent lot, even though it doesn't count. But I don't know how you deal with, you know, people going to eat, come in their cars.
I'm less concerned about that because we're trying to encourage people to walk. I know it's going to be challenging, especially during the day. But at night, I mean, there's plenty of parking on Park Avenue.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
But much of the daytime will probably be local people anyway.
Local people.
And the nighttime would be more the driving through dinner from more of an area. And I think parking is more open at that point.
The in-lu fee would be used to fund one of the off-street parking... one of the public off-street parking facilities that's proposed in the Park Avenue district, which this use could use in the event that such a facility isn't built, you know, within the next few years. That fee could always go towards the maintenance of the existing public parking lot that we have, which is right behind this building.
So those funds are actually earmarked. They're not allowed to be used for something else.
No. If you pay an in-lu fee for parking, it has to be used for parking.
Is this parking lot full during the day or...
Uh, no, not usually. Not yet, right. We all park on the street. Some of us ride our bikes.
Well, I think it's an exciting project and I think that having a lively street use at this prominent corner and a good landmark that anchors the corner is going to be a real addition. So I'm excited to see it.
One other thing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Why don't you come up and let us know? Yeah, I thought... I think you're a neighbor. Don't you live like next door?
My name is Benjamin Yee and I... my family owns the restaurant across the street and I live in the house next to Jim's place. And I'm actually working with an architect now to build my place up in front. We're looking to create two apartments and an art studio for myself. The bottom apartment would be an apartment for my son and the upper apartment would be an apartment for my... I call her my sister. She lives with me. She's been there for 15 years. But what we're thinking about doing is chopping off the front porch and lifting up the house 12 feet and moving it to the center of the property and forward and then putting a brick art deco facade on it with balconies. And then we would have a garage with maybe seven parking spaces in there. And if we double stack the cars, we could have, I think, 10. So my only concern with Jim's proposal is his penthouse windows. If my building gets taller than his, he would definitely hate it. And then also, too, if the windows are on the property line, is there a setback for those windows? Case of fire?
It would be required to meet the building code. I don't think the windows would be permitted on the property line. And if they're set back less than a certain distance, they have to be protected.
Okay, protected by sprinklers or...
I don't know. I'm not sure.
But I was also concerned about my privacy because on our building, we had planned to put a roof deck on the third floor. And privacy is a big deal for me. And if you notice on the drawings, it shows kind of a... it kind of shows my property in an abstract manner. And I actually have a nicely landscaped courtyard that was featured in the Chronicle Home section about 10 years ago. And it's a private courtyard. It looks like an English Tudor place with a little castle and a fish pond and a creek.
Really?
Yeah. It's quite a surprise when you walk back there.
Gosh, yeah. I wouldn't have guessed.
You're all invited anytime. But that's my only comment. I do like the concept. It does anchor the corner. My partner is an artist and what we had planned to do is maybe put an art gallery there on the second floor. That would be pretty much on top of my garage now. And it's something that he would like to do in his retired life. The third floor would be his studio, art studio. The second floor, possibly a gallery. And that second floor would be the same floor that my son would have an apartment on.
Well, it would seem that since the west-facing portion of this proposed building is going to be the stair system going up, that there wouldn't necessarily need to be windows. I mean, it wouldn't be as if someone could be, you know, in a room and peering down onto your roof garden.
I'm not so concerned about that because I imagine it would be just a blank wall. I'm just concerned about their living space overlooking my roof deck.
Right. Perhaps in the northwest corner where the stairway drops down, some of those windows could be eliminated. And once you drop down elevationally, you wouldn't... no one would be able to see directly down into your yard space anyway. And the separation of the stairwell wouldn't allow somebody to peer from that point over and down. Maybe something... that change probably wouldn't even be visible from the street, or at least not to a large degree and wouldn't compromise what you're trying to achieve there. So maybe some of that northwest corner could be modified to address this issue.
Maybe like solid wall and then up above, sort of like a...
Or a glass block.
Yeah.
Or it could be obscure with a translucent system of glazing.
Mm-hmm. All right. I think Jim's point, though, about the stairwell, you would be... you know, any place that you could stand would be far enough back from the windows themselves that, you know, you'd have a look out. But you really couldn't stand there and look down because, you know, you'd have 30 inches.
Other than the top of the landing, which is...
The landing and then, you know, the sofas. I guess you could get an oblique view looking out.
The stairway doesn't work as drawn, anyway. It's going to have to be double that depth. So it's going to be further back into the room.
Maybe the architect can work with the neighbor to make sure those issues are addressed.
That's my only comment. I thank you.
Thank you for hanging in here all this time.
Well, it was also educational for me because I will have to face the same judge and jury. Thanks.
Can I just add something? I'm not sure where they are in terms of application. I'm concerned about what the height of the building that they are talking about. I think that's something else that we would need to work out.
I don't believe that they've come in to talk to us yet.
I see.
Susan?
Guy?
Guy, oh. He's in the building division, but I don't think you've talked to anyone in the planning division yet, so... Well, I suggest you talk to planning before you get too much farther. There may be some requirements.
Yeah, absolutely. You don't want to get too far into this process and spend a lot of money and have to go back in and redo everything.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, I think that brings this study session to closure. Commissioners' comments?
I just... I have one comment, which is that, once again, I would really, really urge the planning department to get us plans that are scalable and that we can read. In that Novartis package with the tree replacement, I was trying to look at the tree planting details and they must have been point two type when, I mean, you couldn't even read them with a magnifying glass. So any assistance we could get in legible plans would be really appreciated, especially since we're supposed to be doing some design review and it would be good to be able to understand what the dimensions are.
And I think that we really, you know, we've been really pushing hard for a complete landscape plan. And I understand that staff is really trying to accommodate applicants and there are always challenges with schedules. But I'm just of the opinion that if they aren't submitting something that's adequate, I don't think the commission wants to waste their time. We want to see something that's complete.
Good point.
You want to have any comments, Tim? Of course you do. No, you don't? Oh, well, I have a couple, if no one else has any. The first comment I wanted to make was for all of you that have you... probably all of your commissioners should have received your planning magazine. And if you don't have time, this is a June edition of Planning. If you don't have time to read anything, I really encourage you to read the article on... it's called "Water and the Density Debate." The city of Emeryville is one of the cities that they feature in this article and it's a very good article. And it's exciting to see that the good work that the staff and the city are doing is starting to be recognized elsewhere. So I encourage you to read that. And then, secondly, I just wanted to take this time to let Murray and Ed know that likewise, it's been an honor for me to serve with you on this commission. And I've really appreciated your comments and instances where you've provided me with guidance. And it's been a pleasure working with you both and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we are adjourned.